I'd like to call the meeting to order. The following is the form. Good evening. This is the zoning board meeting of August 1st, 2024. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice that there's a regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Just so you're aware, Cheryl Bethia is coming. She's running a little bit late, and so is Mark Keely, just to be on the record. Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Joel Reese?
Here.
Alan Rich and Faraz Khan asked to be excused from this evening's meeting. Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Basim Verdas?
Here.
Michael Doherty?
Here.
Kunal Lakia?
Here.
And Chairman Thomas?
Here.
Minutes the regular meeting, June 20th. We have a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Or a second.
Yes, Basim. Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Do you have a mic on?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Michael Doherty?
Yes.
Kunal Lakia?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. There are no resolutions and discussion. We do not have an open public discussion. Hearings, Jayant Gokhale, ZBA 240009. C variances applicant seeks to demolish the existing house and construct a new single-family home at 18 Aiken Lane, Somerset, Block 15, Lot 26 in the zone R40.
Hello?
You're the applicant?
Yes.
Probably should swear them in.
Sir, if you can raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. If you could just restate your name and spell your last name for the record, please. Jayant Gokhale. Thank you.
Let the record reflect Cheryl Bethia.
Okay, go.
Maybe we could start out this way. I wrote by the property today, and you're actually applying for something different than it says here. It says, "C variance applicant is seeking to demolish existing house and construct a new single-family." But the house is not there anymore. You removed the house already. We just removed it. We applied for a demolish permit, and we just removed it. Oh, you gotta talk a little louder for me. I got old ears. Actually, we just demolished it this week itself. So it was there when we applied, and we just demolished it because we had applied and demolished the house. Oh, so you got a permit to do that? Okay, great.
Maybe you could just give us a brief summary of why you're here.
Yeah.
There's two variances involved, I believe.
There is only one variance we are looking for. Two. Oh, sorry, lot size, two. Thank you. So we actually basically, we have been living in Edison, and we want to basically move. As we get to the retirement age, we wanted to move to the some location which is more quieter and more kind of, gives us basically something, basically quite neighborhood. So the Franklin Township, that's what we chose last year to buy a property and build a house. Can't be. Sorry. Okay. Can you hear them? Oh, now, can you start all over?
You have to keep it right to your mouth because they can't hear you.
Sure. Okay. So I've been living in Edison for over 25 years, and as we kind of planning for our retirement and the kind of where do we plan to stay, we were looking for a location which is more quieter, more to a basically in a nature kind of, and this particular place was kind of fits that bill. So we are basically decided to kind of build a house for our retirement in the Franklin Township in that area, which is next to the canal and a lot of wooded area and all. So given the basically reason, basically, we are moving with our old age plus of my mom, who will be staying with us, and she had the physical knee surgery and all. So we are actually, instead of building a two-story house, we wanted to build a single-story house. And same thing basically can happen to us as we kind of go to that age group. So that's why it's a single-family house that we are planning to build. The reason it is kind of a variance that we are basically looking for, the house size is, we come from India, and there basically culturally like old time, there used to be open courtyard in the center, and the house was, all the rooms were constructed around that. And this house plan, if you look at it, it's based on that theme. Only difference is it's covered courtyard. It's not a courtyard, it's a kind of area that is covered, but it's, all the rooms are in kind of surrounding that central area so that like you spend most of the time in that central area. A family, you basically, so that's why basically that central courtyard becomes very critical, and it's coming from that cultural stuff. Like, we wanted to build so that we feel something that we used to have or we have seen in the old age, in basically when we were there. So I think looking at basically family, basically us, my mom, my son who's in California, we expect him to visit and have his family, and also we kind of looking at the four-bedroom house with the courtyard and things. So that's what the variance we are asking for.
Okay, you, a lot is a few feet undersized. That exists. You can't do anything about that. Anything that can be done about reducing the impervious coverage closer to 10%?
So I think as I said, like if we want to build a single-story house, that coverage, it's very difficult to do it in 10%. And then given the, as I said, my mom and the family that we are basically expecting to kind of fit into 10%. But what we tried to do is a couple of things. Like, we kind of made sure the impervious area, we are not exceeding that 20% or any other basically kind of limits. Also, like just so that the neighborhood kind of looks that how good, we also removed the existing garage that was there so that even like that has been demolished. Like if you, like as Robert said, like he visited that, so we have removed that. So now it's actually only one variance we need. We can't just taken care of that.
Okay, does your planner have something to?
I do. Sign? No?
You're, we may as well qualify you since.
I'm just trying to see the microphones.
Go through the functionality of it.
The light is green. It should be on. I turned them all on.
Is it?
Hold it to your mouse.
My name is John Chadwick. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Why don't you swear, Mr. Chadwick?
And have appeared.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just repeat your name again, please.
The name is John Chadwick. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and have been for some period of time. Better?
We can accept your credentials as long as you're still licensed.
And you got right to the point. The variances are for lot size and lot coverage. Lot size, all the lots adjoining us are also undersized, roughly the same amount as ours. We're a couple hundred square feet, under the 40,000, under the 40,000 square foot. There's no point in doing a buy-sell letter because all of the lots adjoining us are non-conforming. So we go from one variance to another. The lot coverage is the design of the building. If you look at the plot layout, that, I assume you have the maps that we'll file with the application. The building is cocked to the street, so you don't have any long side facing the street itself. So it gives the appearance of a different shape. And also, the building doesn't have long, flat walls. If you go through this nev-- oh. Just gonna hand these out, and if you could just pass them down. I don't know if there's enough for everyone or not, but maybe you could share.
Mr. Chairman, we should mark this as Exhibit A1.
Yes, this is an aerial photograph. I think it's a Google source, but I'm not positive. It's fairly recent, it's about, it's--
Do you know when it was taken, Mr. Chadwick? Do you know when it was taken, the aerial?
I believe it's in April 2024 timeframe. The building is still shown on that. There's the demolition occurred a few days ago. The property you see, this is an old neighborhood. It's not within the historic district of Grigstown. That was checked, and you can see a report. You do not have a report from the Historic Commission. The buildings along this street, you have some large, two-story colonial design, and you also have some cottages left over from the original Grigstown Summer Home Community. And that's kind of the streets, I'd say, west of this and south and east of this going towards the canal. Same thing. You have some large modernistic homes. There's no particular strain of architecture. It's much different than a tract residential development, and it's gone through an evolution clearly when they put sewers out there about 15 years ago now. Pros--
Yeah.
They took them out to Sunset, and then they took them down to Grigstown. And they had to. There was a lot, lot of issues in Grigstown. But this, those are things of the past. You have a boundary line to this, and you can see from the aerial photographs. It's well-vegetated, well-mature, formal plantings as well as just trees. So the, and the setbacks well exceed all the requirements, the R40 zone. And because it's a one-story house, the coverage, in my judgment, the size of the structure is much less imposing as well as being angled to the street as opposed to facing straight up on the street. For all those reasons, and I think more important and what was emphasized by the applicant is we're well under the maximum lot coverage. And as part of this whole project, we take a garage which was two-car garage, probably on the property line, and that variance and to the neighbor to the west has been eliminated. So I think in all said and done, the planning project is a benefit both to the neighboring property where the garage was imposing to the community itself in terms of adding a new, very attractive, quite unique home. Oh, the other part of the architecture, you do not have one of these 11-on-12 slope roofs. It's a relatively, it's not flat, but it's not imposing as you would have some of the newer-style homes. So in my judgment, it fits the neighborhood. It fits the evolution. You can see out there, you're familiar with this neighborhood, and the landscaping provides the clear separation between this new project and the joiners. My judgment, it beats the standards for a C2 variance and should be approved.
Just a quick question. This isn't a project that's going to require you to clear-cut the lot before you build the houses.
There's nothing, there's three trees that are going to come down the front yard. The rest all around is showing the plan is remaining.
So we can feel safe putting in a resolution that any existing tree removal will be very limited?
Yes.
I'm not going to say three trees. Something might come up, but--
Yep.
So it's understood that we don't go out there three days after the resolution passes, and it's a flat table?
Correct. I mean, the property is flat as a board, but the basic vegetation is all on the boundary lines. Some of it's on the slots, some of it's on the joiners.
It looks like you have a pretty good building envelope from the aerial--
Yes.
--without doing anything. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. What's the accessory setback for a front yard?
Accessory?
Yeah, you have an accessory structure, don't you? One-story basic garage, or is that being demolished?
No, that's gone.
Okay, sorry.
That's all gone. That's the one that's right on the property line. Almost.
Any other questions? We're open to the public then. Is there anyone who would like to ask a question or make a statement concerning this application? Then we'll close, and I'm assuming you're completed.
I am.
Any board discussion or motion? Just in case, since we usually get a detailed report from Mark on applications like this, any resolution, I think, should be, should include that any recommendations or comments by any of the boards or commissions or experts, township personnel, are, will be followed.
Yes. I forgot, I should have mentioned, we've reviewed the reports, and we have no objection.
Okay, then we're in line for a motion.
I move that we, I move that we grant Jayant Gokhale the variance is needed to build a house at 18 Aiken Lane in Franklin Township, Block 15, Lot 26 in the R40 zone. The applicant will abide by any requirements or suggestions offered by board professionals or other individuals hired by the board to participate in this matter.
We need a second?
Second.
You, Basim? Okay. I'll just grab Basim. I heard a couple people say second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, good luck with it. Next on the agenda--
Thank you.
--would be 11 properties, ZBA 240001. Preliminary and final major site plan with C variances in which the applicant proposes to construct a four-story apartment building at 940 Easton Avenue, Somerset, Block 385, Lot 2.07 in the GB zone. We concluded the last time with the testimony given by the architect. I, as I recall, we were at the point where we were able to start taking board questions and then opening to the public. If there's anything you would like to highlight as a way of a quick review, I'll entertain that. I don't want to get involved with actually giving the testimony again.
I don't think, Mr. Chairman, there's anything that I can add to the testimony that was provided. I'm assuming those who wish to ask questions remember the testimony, and they can begin, whether it's from the board first or the community. I just also wanted to note for the record, we did receive the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission report, and we do intend to address that, just not at this meeting. The Historic Preservation Commission made recommendations on changing the architectural design of the building, and we need some time to address those. And at a later meeting, we will present our response to that.
Okay, so I'm going to extend what you're saying and say that those are not points that need to be discussed or questioned at this point tonight because they're, it's as though he didn't testify about them. Are they going to be changed or reviewed, or there will be a follow-up?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. There were significant suggestions, and we wanted time to adequately address them and then come back with our response. But we're not prepared to do that tonight, so. And none of the testimony that he gave is really specifically addressing that in advance.
Okay. That's good. Any, before we move on to the public, are there any board questions from the testimony given by the architect?
Just one minor question. Has the application been submitted to DRCC for any comments on the facade of the building at this time?
The application has been submitted to DRCC, and we did receive a letter, and I believe we provided that to the township as part of our application package. If not, I will make sure that you have that. Thank you.
Okay, then, we will be about to open to the public for questions. Before we do that, I have a couple of comments. The questions, this part of the hearing is intended for the public to have an opportunity to question a witness concerning his testimony. Nothing else. Not his testimony from other meetings, his testimony that he gave in this hearing in front of us all in person. If anyone doesn't remember from the last meeting, there's not much I can do about that tonight. There's been ample opportunity to re-watch the hearing on cable TV and bring yourself up to date. Another thing we're going to do is, you're not, we're not entertaining questions for this witness who is an architect and gave testimony, architectural testimony. Do not ask him a question about traffic or anything else. He's an expert here on architecture. The other thing I'm going to remind everybody, if you're not sure what's appropriate or what's not appropriate, you can go to FranklinTownshipNJ.org, look up boards and commissions, and there's an extremely detailed, excellent description of what the responsibility of the audience is in terms of asking questions of witnesses during hearings. We're not going to take the time to go over it now. You can do that now. You're a seat if you needed to. I hope we, the other, the final thing is, you all come here with an interest in this application. You all have ideas about which way it should go or which way it shouldn't go. Someone gets up and asks a question or makes a comment, and it agrees with your position, this is not the place to stand up and cheer and stomp your feet or clap your hands. It's not a sporting event. It's a quasi-judicial hearing. It's going to be conducted like that. We're going to follow the rules. The audience is going to follow the rules, or you'll be asked to leave. So I hope that's harsh but clear. Now, we'll open to the public for questions of the architect and his, concerning his testimony.
Could we put the architectural plans on the TV?
That was a suggestion I wanted to make. Good. Could we put either the elevations or what you used last time in your presentation? And that is, of course, another issue that everybody just heard. There has been a request from the Historic Preservation Committee about some redesigned features regarding the appearance of the building. The applicant has agreed that they're going to go back and look at that, and they're not prepared to give testimony or answer questions based on that part of the architectural style. That will happen the next time. Okay, anybody interested in questioning the architect?
Good afternoon. Kiki Anastasakos, 3204 Enclave Circle in Somerset. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask my question. Based, based on your presentation last month, would you say that your architectural plans are addressing the issue of environmental sustainability? And could you point us to those items or designs in your plan that make this building that 11 properties propose to build environmentally sustainable or a green building as such? Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question. We're at a point in the process of development where this is, we're at the Board of Adjustment hearing to get relief to build this project. We're not at the point where we've completed construction documents on the project, and we don't know all the mechanical systems, all the exact materials, levels of insulation in the building. We haven't gone through that yet. My client will release me to do that if and when we get an approval to move forward with the plans as shown. But we go through a whole, a series of, about four months of design, not only myself, but with a mechanical, electrical plumbing team, and we look at each one of those issues. And then we can determine how sustainable the building will be at that point. Most of our buildings, this is not direct testimony, but most of our buildings, just in normal construction of a multifamily building like this, basically would meet the qualifications for a LEED-certified building, which is sort of the basic level. But we need to go through and look at every facet of the building to make that determination and to give you an accurate answer to your question.
Okay, so the LEED certification I used to remember, does it include solar panels? Or is it just solar panel ready?
LEED certification, and we're not saying we're seeking LEED certification. We just, I use that as a standard to look at our building against. But LEED certification is like a Chinese menu in that you pick items within that scorecard to determine whether you meet a certain level of environmental sustainability. It involves all sorts of things. It can involve solar panels. It frequently doesn't in New Jersey, but it can involve that. That could be one of the items.
Thank you. And just out of my own ignorance, do, as an architect, are these buildings that are being built today or next week, next month, next year, do they take into consideration the extreme weather that, you know, we are encountering? I mean, after all, everybody's home insurance is going up. I know mine is going up. And the reason the insurers give us is that extreme weather creates more opportunities. So how, how would this building address the more extreme weather, you know, let's say flooding from storms and things like that?
I can't really comment on the flooding issue. That would be more the site civil engineers area of responsibility. But I can tell you that the building will be, will meet all applicable building code standards set forth by the state of New Jersey for this type of building.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hey, anyone else?
Terry Thorson, 18 Lebedrive. I'm assuming the building is a fireproof building?
The building will be fully sprinkled. Every floor of the building will be sprinkled. Fireproof, I don't know how to--
Concrete?
No, it'll be a wood-framed structure of the building. But it'll be, again, a safe building in terms of having the proper exit ways, the proper rating, fire ratings between units, both horizontally and vertically, and a fully sprinkled building.
Okay. I come from Manhattan, and I'm used to fire escapes. No fire escapes with a four-story building?
No fire escape, exterior fire escapes. We have internal rated stair towers--
Yeah, it looks like-- --access to the ground. It looks like there's one staircase per wing from the diagram.
That's essentially correct, yes.
They're going to get everybody from the wing down that fire, down the fire stairs internally in the building?
Yes.
Are there emergency lights that come on?
Yes.
In the, in the staircases?
And in the corridors, yes.
Okay, that's good. Anything else I want here? I don't think, I don't think there's anything else that I have here. At the last meeting, I mentioned that even though the presentation said they did not know how much sewage was produced, the application does say it's going to be additional 29,665 gallons per day of sewage compared to the Kmart, which is not here now. Provisions to take care of that?
I think we're getting off track.
Okay.
This is the architect, the sewage could have come under the engineer.
Yeah, the engineer didn't know it, I had to give him the, his own report.
Well, we'll ask him again. This is not an architectural issue.
Okay, all right. I also noticed that the original application, there was a request for signage, big, big signs, and when the new application came in, they were removed. So is there going to be any signage saying what the building is?
Yes, there will be signs on the building.
Okay. And also, in one of the parts of the application I wrote, it said that, get this, I should get this correctly, that the building would be in symbiotic relationship with the, with the surrounding neighborhoods. What is the advantage to the surrounding neighborhood to have the apartments there? I can see for the strip mall, it's an advantage, but for the surrounding community, what would be the advantage of putting more apartments in?
I think that's more a planning question, and we have our planner coming as part of the team that'll be presenting. He has not made his presentation, so I think he could maybe more adequately answer that question than I could.
Okay, all right, because I know you, you finished up the last meeting, and you didn't get to, you didn't get to speak the entire time. And I know somebody asked, could we have some idea of what experts were going to be at the meeting so we could frame our questions appropriately? I didn't see any information about that, so I didn't know who's going to be here today as an expert. I knew you would be there.
We announced that traffic would be the star tonight after, after the architect. It was presented that traffic would be next.
Okay, and then, if the, I imagine you have the traffic person? No? Traffic person's here today? Okay, will the public be able to question the traffic expert?
We'll see how far we get. The public gets to question every witness.
Oh, okay, because I was thinking of the other meetings where you get like five minutes in the beginning and then you, you can't speak again. In other, like, planning board, planning board, town council.
You get an opportunity to question each witness.
Here. What I'm saying is, what is in the back of my mind is I probably was thinking about planning board and town council. We only get one shot to speak. So I'm glad, I'm glad there's an opportunity to come up again with a different expert.
Theoretically, you only get one shot at each witness unless, until everyone else gets a chance, depending on how long it takes. But let's not, we don't need to get...
No, don't do that, that's not what they've been doing, so, thank you very much.
Anyone else like to question?
Good evening. Just to refresh our memories from 40 days ago, Mr. Minow, I just wanted to make sure I have right some things that you said on June 20th. You stated, I believe, that part of the new shopping center design will be to make currently 13 retail spaces in the existing building, going to reconfigure that slightly with new demising portions, portions, or portions to create 17 retail spaces. You then said generally the larger spaces are being made smaller. Levin management has determined that their target market for this retail, so let's, that's what we're working with. And you then stated, we want to give this building a really fresh look from the exterior. Does that sound about right to what you said, Mr. Minow?
That's essentially right, yes.
Thank you. From your viewpoint, was there any structural reason or architectural reason, from an architect's point of view only, why six years ago, approximately when Kmart closed, that Levin couldn't have done the same thing, redesigning from 13 to 17 smaller stores? Or by demolishing the Kmart going from 13 to, let's say, 25 smaller stores?
Arnie, that, that's not part of his architectural testimony. That, again, could be planner, that could be the site engineer, we're talking to the architect.
So that's not an architectural question?
I don't think so.
It's not, it's not a question for this architect, because he's not the one who would have been involved in coming up with those things, or at least he hasn't, that wasn't part of his original testimony. You have to tie your questions into his testimony. And I thought you did good by the way you started, but now we've gone a little bit off the track.
I'm going to try and behave.
I can tell.
Okay, so you also, let me just look through here. You did say it's not this architect's position, so I'm not sure what that means. So it was another, another architect?
Sure, it could have been, could have been anybody, but it certainly wasn't him because he wasn't, that wasn't his testimony today. So that question is inappropriate for, for this witness.
Okay, okay. You also stated on the 20th, I believe, what we've done, we want to give this building a really fresh look from the exterior. Is it possible, Mr. Minow, if Levin had done this exterior makeover for a fresher look six years ago, making it much more appetizing place to attract retail tenants?
Arnie, please, you're getting into giving an opinion about something that happened six years ago. The testimony is that as part of this application, the other retail uses will be renovated, the exteriors will be renovated. What happened six years ago wasn't testified to, as far as I'm concerned, is totally irrelevant. What's happening now, what they're proposing, and what his testimony is what we're talking about.
Is it correct that you met with the historic commission specifically because the applicant's property is within 1,000 feet of the DNR canal, making Levin property within an historic district?
Yes.
Did you research this site to gain historical perspective to help you design this building?
We researched this building, this proposed building, with respect to the DNR canal pathway and views from such.
To your knowledge from your research, has there ever been a building on this site that was or is greater than three stories, greater than three distinct separate floor levels?
Not, not in my knowledge, no.
Okay. Greater than two stories?
Not in my knowledge.
Okay. Okay, let's see. As you stated on the 20th, it's your job to do your best to give this proposed building and the shopping center a fresh look, correct?
I, I think I said I was, yes, we were trying to give the center and the new residential building a fresh look.
You did, yes. And I believe you also said you wanted, or it was stated that you want it to meld or blend in so it doesn't, shall I say, stand out like a sore thumb?
The what, to blend in?
You don't want the new building to stand out like a sore thumb, you want it to blend in with everything so it doesn't stand out like a sore thumb.
Well, we want it to blend in, yes, with the remainder of the shopping center, both materially, yes.
Got done. Do you believe, or should I say, do you want the board to believe that this proposed four-story residential structure, where there's never been a structure more than two stories, would meld or blend in with the other buildings on this site or within visible neighborhood structures that are all two stories, or less and likely be visible from the canal, especially during the winter months? Or might it stand out like a sore thumb?
There's no requirement for us to blend in. What we did study was the topography and the views from the canal to this building. We presented that to the historic commission.
Did you do a balloon test?
Mr. Chairman, let me help on that. I believe the, the Office Depot building has two floors. It's still there. It's a fitness place now, but that has two floors. It's something with two floors in that, in that shopping center.
Yeah, I was saying anything above two floors.
You said two floors. Okay, just, just let it go, Arnie.
Okay, I will. So did you do any kind of balloon test to see if, while standing on the canal towpath, to see if you could see from, from there, especially during the winter, to see if you could see a four-story structure?
We didn't do a balloon test, but we did a photographic reproduction of the building using accurate grades and topography, engineered topography. We showed that, we showed those drawings to the, and the photographs to the historic commission.
And when did you, explain that to me again, what is that you did? I'm not clear.
We took photographs in the wintertime from the canal towpath, looking toward Rutgers Plaza. And we, photographically, engineering-wise, we recreated what the building would look like and what the view would be from the canal towpath. And it's virtually invisible because there's such a grade rise from the canal towpath to this site.
From, from how many points on the canal towpath did you take those pictures?
I can't recall exactly.
More than one?
More than one, yeah.
More than five?
I don't, I don't know, sir.
I mean, it's important, it's a long canal.
I'm not sure exactly how many photographs we took.
I'm not concerned about how many photographs you took, I'm concerned about how many positions from the canal that you took. You could take one from 15 different places.
There's no, there's no standard or requirement, so we made our presentation, I think it was generally accepted by the historic board. Their comments to us were not really related to that, it was more about the exterior architecture of the building.
Okay, we're not at the historic commission meeting now, I've been told that, so I can't ask about what happened at the historic commission meeting. But if you didn't take it from different spots, that could be problematic, that it could be seen from different places on the canal where you didn't take pictures, is that possible?
It's possible, but there's no, again, there's no requirement, even if it is seen from the canal, it's for the historic board to determine whether it's a negative impact or not.
Well, okay, that's a historic thing, so, but I can't talk about that, so...
Arnie, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
Over here, over here.
Hey, Mark.
I'm looking through documents, I don't see a report from the Delaware Canal Commission.
He mentioned, he mentioned it at the beginning.
Okay, okay. So you're going to, they did do a report, what was the answer then, if I could hear it?
My understanding is they did a report, I thought we had provided it to the township, I will double check and make sure that you have that.
Okay, so, okay, so I think some of this gets to what Arnie is speaking of. So I think, you know, it may be good for the board to understand what the, similar to the historic commission, I know the historic commission is advisory to this board, DRCC is not, obviously they're a separate legal thing, but I think it would be good for the board to understand what the DRC's comments may have been, did they raise similar issues to this, and if so, how do you intend to address them? So I think it may be a good idea at the time you provide the testimony about the historic commission's report to also address the DRCC, just so the board understands where, and any comments they may have had.
That was the plan, yes.
All right, thank you.
I just find it, and this is going to be a question, I hope, difficult to understand how you take pictures of something that doesn't exist, that's why you do a balloon test. So why wasn't the balloon test done so you could put it up to the four-story height, to the 43 or 46 feet or whatever it's going to be, and then take your pictures from there? Why wouldn't you do that, other than it's not required?
What we did is something that's maybe even better than a balloon test, we recreated the building where, in its actual height, the proposed building on the plan, and we cut that into the photograph, and it was basically invisible from the canal towpath at a person's head height.
So, so it's some kind of a model and you shop, cut, I forget what the terminology, you cut and pasted, you know, where the, where the building was going to be and...
It's done with great engineering control.
Yeah, I understand, it's more than what I'm saying, but, okay. Balloon test would have been better, I think, but you guys are the experts, I guess. I guess my last question, do you want this board to believe that the proposed residential structure that Levin wants to build on a site historically used for general business, never residential, will it stand out like a sore thumb, or will it meld with the existing neighborhood in this most densely populated section of Franklin?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the, could you meld that into a question?
I don't know how else I can say it, I'll try and say it a little slower. Do you want this board to believe that this proposed residential structure that Levin wants to build on a site historically used for general business, never residential, will it stand out like a sore thumb, or will it meld with the existing neighborhood in this most densely populated section of Franklin?
My opinion is that it will not stand out like a sore thumb, it will be appropriate for this site. The unique topography of this, of this particular site with the hill directly behind it toward the Park at Franklin apartment complex, and the way the grade rises along JFK Boulevard, I think it nestles in a, in a good position related to the residential neighbors. And I believe that it's a good project for the township, and I stated this in my testimony last time, to be supportive of your retail assets in the town and make them successful. And many towns have understood this with the weakening of retail, they need to provide walkable residential...
I'm talking about physi, I'm talking about physical, I'm not talking about...
He's trying to answer the question, Mr. Chairman, if he could finish.
Yeah, but he wasn't answering my question.
Okay, I think I'm done.
Well, you discussed the neighborhood people. Did you speak to the neighborhood people about this?
I have not, that's not my role.
Right. I heard him. Okay.
I have not spoken to the neighbors, and that's not my role.
Okay, so it's for me to ask that of somebody else, if that, okay, if I, I probably won't, but, okay. Question, my last, I'm done here, but I just want to have a question for you. Since he kept bringing up historic, why am not, am I not allowed to bring up things that happened at the historic commission?
Because, number one, we weren't there.
I was.
We weren't.
I was.
We're here, this is where we're having the hearing, not at the historic preservation committee. I was reviewing the report that we got from the historic preservation commission, there was numerous comments about the appearance of the building and the potential change in the roof and the different elevations of the roof, so it's not one straight line. There's no, no concern expressed anywhere that I could find about doing a vision test, balloon test, or photo test from any sites, let alone four or five. That's the report that we have. The second thing I think we need to be aware of, two-story building can mean different things to different people. It's not, there's not necessarily a standard. We need to compare in feet...
We need to compare in feet what's going on. How many feet high is the Kmart building? How many feet high is the new building proposed and what the difference is? Not that one is four stories and one is two stories.
Actually, if he had answered something like that, I was going to, I was going to say, I distinctly asked about two stories. And I said, and I was going to ask him distinct and separate floor levels. But he said no to the question as to, no, there hasn't been anything greater than two stories. And I was going to say, well, I'm talking about distinct and separate levels. Levin's variance asked for forty-seven feet high where thirty is allowed. So, he could be talking about a facade, but I was talking about two distinct levels. So, anyway, I think I'm done.
We still need to compare some of our similar things, not stories. Two-story and a four-story building, we ran into this problem on Hamilton Street several times where four-story buildings weren't allowed, but they were only a couple feet bigger at some point than the three-story one. That's all I'm saying. And as I said before, the Historic Preservation Report that I've read again just now, it's not mentioned, it mentions issues with the design of the building. Doesn't, and it doesn't, and there are recommendations or suggestions. So, it doesn't actually get into a recommendation for a test or anything else. It would be nice if they wanted to do a balloon test. It'd be nice if they wanted to take more pictures and show them. It'd be nice if we saw the simulated photographs that they did take, because I think this board has found those to be extremely helpful in the past and other applications. Those are all things that can be, that can be dealt with yet. It doesn't mean that that opportunity is lost.
Well, the only reason I bring up historic, because I was at that meeting. It was about an hour and a half meeting. And there, other than the points that the Historic Commission sent to them, I thought there were other questions that I could have asked here of him, because he was there, Mr. Wizniewski was there, and, but I can't ask those questions, so...
Those three questions are based on the testimony that he gave to us here in the open hearing. This is where everyone's an equal partner, not some people are Historic Preservation or whatever. It's what happens here, not there. They give us their report and their recommendations, as is the procedure. And keep in mind, they make recommendations, we make decisions. And they don't always match up, because Historic Preservation may make a recommendation that's at odds with the Environmental Commission at some point. So, you can't always have everything matching. And then, that's a decision. What to implement is up to us. Any other questions?
I'm done, thanks.
Anyone else wish to question?
Elizabeth Tools, Tindalea Road, Somerset, New Jersey. Are we allowed to ask questions about the diagram up here? Or is that not falling for...
Part of his testimony.
Okay. So, I guess where I am, it's difficult to see from the diagram exactly what we're going to see visibly. We live behind this area. How is, what exactly is covering this building? How visible will it be when we're walking down the walking trail, for example? Very popular in our area. It walks right behind along JFK, I think it is? Yeah, right up JFK. So, how visible will this building be? Like, what is going to? I see you have little bushes, trees in the diagram, but it's hard to see how much they cover the building.
So, one other question. This is a view of what the project would look like from JFK, pretty much at the Marconi Plaza intersection with the shopping center. And so, this is taken across the street, looking toward where the current Kmart building is. So, that's an accurate, you know, photo montage showing our building at the correct grade and showing the landscaping in the foreground along JFK.
Mr. Mayor, was that a new exhibit? Did you show that at the last meeting?
I didn't show it at the last meeting, but I showed it to the Historic Commission. I just thought it would be helpful.
Was it the first time this board's seen it?
That's correct, yeah.
I can make it available to this board.
We're going to be adding that to our submission when we make the response to the Historic Preservation Recommendations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But if you want to mark it as an exhibit for tonight, counsel...
I think maybe we should just mark it as exhibit for the record, so I'm not sure what it is. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but if it was, but A...
We'll call it, let's call it A-10 to be safe.
Okay, A-10, and we'll fix it later if it's not.
And one other exhibit that I think might be helpful to your question, and maybe people who live behind the project, this is a view from the Park at Franklin Apartments. So, it's a little difficult to see, but you see the, in the foreground of the existing Franklin Park Apartments, there's a garage structure to the rear of the apartments, you know, at, close to the property line, adjacent to our proposed project. And what you're seeing is about a story and a half of the proposed building, because the grade of the Kmart site is so much lower than the grade of the apartment project directly beyond. One of the other things about the design of the apartment, the site plan of the apartment project, is that all the buildings in this portion that are directly adjacent to the site in question are perpendicular to the building. In other words, they're all lengthwise to our proposed building. So, most of the windows in the community are looking, you know, across these parking lots at each other. They're not looking directly toward the Kmart site. So, this is an accurate depiction of the height of the building, cut into an actual photograph in the wintertime of the project.
Okay, can we go back to the last photo where you were showing the, that one? So, that's the amount of shrubbery that will be covering that massive building?
Yes, I think there were some comments, and I don't know what our response is. I think there were some comments during the engineering testimony when the landscaping was presented. There were comments from the board about strengthening the landscaping, and I don't know whether we're going to be coming back with that or not.
Mr. Chairman, one of the items you'll note in the Historic Preservation Report, provide additional vegetative screening along JFK. And so, when we do come back to address those recommendations, that will be part of that presentation. But yes, this is showing pre-receit of the Historic Preservation Report. And so, these exhibits don't take into account the changes that we are considering to do in response to that report.
These exhibits were created on April 4th, 2024.
Okay. I guess my question is, since it came up just a little while ago, so how tall is the existing Kmart building compared to the new building? Like, what is the height of the current Kmart building? And what will be the height difference with the new building that you proposed putting in?
The height of the existing Kmart, I believe, is approximately twenty-two feet. And the height of our building is forty-six point seven-two feet.
So, it's going to be more than double the size of the current building that's there now. And you mentioned that your symbiotic design is more for the, well, first, let me just go here.
You're our guest. Did I take the mic? You could go to the other one if it's easier. It's up to you.
I know you showed us the picture of the other apartment complex, but our trail, it's very popular. We all walk on it every morning, all the housings that's around it. We would be coming from here, like, this is the sidewalk all the way down to our homes. So, when we walk, we're coming here. So, I'm assuming that as we're walking our trail now, we're going to see this massive building. Would that be a safe, accurate assumption? Because forty-six point seven feet would mean that this would tower far above every other building that we have around that area.
Well, again, this is, this is an accurate depiction of the height. And again, from the far side of the building toward the apartments, it's about, roughly about the same height as the apartments that are there. In other words, when you factor in where the grade is for this building and how it's depressed in the back of the Kmart site, there's a big hill that goes up to the apartments.
Can you go to the next photo that you showed with the other ones, with the apartments?
Yeah.
It seems like that building is a lot larger than those apartments, to me, from that photo.
Well, what you're saying, what you're saying is a story and a half above the garage roof, which that garage structure, existing garage structure for those apartments is down a little bit, so you're seeing a story and a half. This is an accurate depiction of what you see. But if you look, if you look across the photograph, it's actually, from this particular view, is actually lower than the roofs of the apartment building.
Yeah, it looks like the, it looks more like the, the commercial section of Davidson. That's what it looks like from me as a, as a...
The commercial section of what?
Davidson Avenue, that area where they have the tall, you know, the buildings, like the office buildings, compared to what we currently have now. So, I guess my question is, when you talk about a symbiotic design, you really mean a symbiotic design for, for just that shopping area that you're trying to transfer over, but not necessarily meshing with the rest of the community?
Yeah, I mean, you have to think about, this is residential, and I'm assuming you're in a residential situation. Is it, when you walk down that path, is it better to see other residential or a Kmart building, a side of it?
And even the, even the, you know, yeah, it's better to see, well, it's better to see something not so different from what we're seeing everywhere else. It's just going to stand out for us. And we pass this every day, going home, trying to go to work, trying to go to school. So, it just looks vastly different from everything that's around it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Good afternoon, good evening. I just have one question. What's the advantage?
Right up to the mic so we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
No, good.
Okay. I'm just waiting.
Wait, I also need to know who you are.
Okay, my name is Lorraine Swars. I've lived in the township for forty-four years. I live right on Eastern Avenue at 1228. And I've watched the destruction of this town proceed in the past forty years. And I would like to just ask the architect, what is the advantage of having this project where they're planning on putting it? I don't know that this is an advantage to our community. I think it's an advantage to the owners of the property.
That would be a planning question.
Well, I'm sure there's other boards that have to hear what we have to say, but we have really been very, very upset about this plan, and...
That's a comment for later.
Thank you, Ms. Swars.
Anyone else?
Alex Strauss, 285 Haslot Way. Sorry if I'm gonna, I just came late, so sorry if Chairman Thomas, you couldn't tell me. I'm sure you will if I repeat things. Mr. Minow, I believe? Yes, sir. Can you tell me, okay, so this, these plans, they don't include, unlike many of the developments in the area, there's no children's playground. Is that correct?
Not a dedicated children's playground, but there are amenity spaces within the building and within the courtyards.
Right, okay. Yeah, unlike the Park at Franklin, the Grove, the Harrison, okay, they, some of them have tennis courts. There's no tennis court, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And many of them have dog runs. There's no dog run, is that correct? Dog park?
We haven't designated that, but there potentially is an area along the back edge of the property, along the back edge of the parking lot there, that could be a dog run?
Could be a dog run. The back, well, that's kind of sloped, right?
The very bottom edge is not. There could be a dog walk area along that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I also noticed even, like, the Grove, over at the Grove, formerly the Avalon, they even have a number of, like, garden plots. There's none of that, right? There's no place to plant things, et cetera?
That's getting beyond architecture.
All right, moving on. In light of the fact that you don't have many things, you don't have a basketball court, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What is the reason for having this building? You know, what is it providing that is not provided at many of the other apartment complexes in the area?
That's not testimony that he should be able to answer.
All right. I found one thing, and that's the storage areas. You have a storage area in the basement, right?
You don't want to...
That's correct.
You don't want to quit, do you? Ask him questions about his architectural testimony.
You said there's a storage area, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. How large are those, are those storage lockers? Can I ask? Hang on.
The area that you're talking about, oops, is this area on the left of the sheet I'm looking at. And we have storage areas in there that, I think the total storage is about thirty-eight hundred square feet. Yeah, thirty-five hundred and eighty square feet. And it's, it'll be divided into, you know, cages, rentable stores.
Cages, okay. Is that secured? Is there camera? Can people go in there? It's the basement, so with some bolt cutters, I mean, you know...
Okay, his architectural testimony.
Okay. All right. Now, you talked about the grassy area in front, right? What I called the postage stamp, you didn't like that, but that area of glass that you're putting in, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that advantageous to people enjoying themselves? Because...
Again, if you're going to ask about the construction of a playground, installing a grass area, that's fine. Is it advantageous?
Okay.
No. Let's stick to the architectural testimony.
Architecturally, architecturally, this thing is basically dead-ending. The reason it's there is because you're changing the course of the road, right? As opposed to what it is now. And, and won't people feel they're sitting in the middle there, that cars are coming up?
Again, we're giving a statement. Your obligation...
I'm asking you.
Your responsibility is a question.
I'm asking, okay. All right, since that's going to be a really pleasant area. Okay, let me go to the building. Let me go to the building now. You have balconies. I mean, I don't understand why I can't ask him about, about the building, you know, even if it's not in his testimony exactly. But you mentioned balconies, right? You mentioned balconies and, right, there are balconies, right?
There are, yes, there are Juliette balconies on the street side of the building.
Okay. But, okay, so Juliette balconies. So, it's like, what, you're, are you opening a sliding door, glass door? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. But not everyone gets a balcony, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the people on the ground floor, they don't have, unless they're on the courtyard side or the back, there's no patios there for them, right? Is that correct?
Not individual to their unit, but there's a very, two very large courtyards that they're free to use. they've, they're free to use.
Right, so if they have the apartments on the other side, there's no, they don't have an outdoor space.
That's correct.
On, on the out, exterior side. Okay, what you might call, okay. I noticed you talked about the affordable units. You said, did you say that it was according to Council on Affordable Housing or et cetera?
Well, there is no, there is no more Council on Affordable Housing, there's the UHAC standards that cover affordable housing.
The current, the fair share type. Okay, so was there any kind of system where you were going to put those affordable housings, housing units in, in the building? Was there any kind of system used?
System, I'm not sure what you mean.
Again, we're, affordable housing is not his expertise, okay?
Yeah, we've denoted where they are in the building, they're on the plans. There's, they're throughout the building.
But they're, okay. But if somebody wanted to have an affordable housing unit overlooking the pool-
That's not his-
There aren't any.
That's not, I'm telling you, you don't, listen.
Well, I'm asking about the building itself, and he's the architect.
You're asking about someone who, what do you do if they wanna have a balcony overlooking the pool?
Mr. Chairman-
Ask about the questions, ask about the design.
That's what I'm asking about, I'm asking about the design.
You're asking about the use and the, of it.
We do have affordable housing units overlooking the pool.
I don't, I didn't see any, sir.
Okay, they're on the plans.
You asked him, he said they have affordable units overlooking the pool and balconies.
Use this as reference.
We don't need to spend an hour and a half so he can look it up because you didn't see any.
Why don't you just vote now and vote, and vote yes on this, right? Okay, yes, sir.
Well, if you look at the plan, the beige units here are affordable units overlooking the pool courtyard. There's, on the ground floor plan, there's, there's six, six units overlooking the pool courtyard. On the upper floors, the upper three floors, there are eight per floor overlooking the pool courtyard. So there, I didn't, I can't do the math, but it's like twen, over twenty units that overlook the pool courtyard. It's the left side.
The left side, okay. So the left side, okay.
The beige units.
The beige units are affordable, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're affordable one bedrooms.
And then there's the A.
There's also affordable, um, two-bedroom unit in the, in the inside right-hand corner.
I see. Can I ask you about, so you had three-bedroom units, is there any reason why you had no, like you have, okay, let me just ask you, you have no three-bedroom units for non-affordable, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And are you, where that apartment complex in the area have three bedrooms for non-affordable?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
That's another question that lends itself to the people who are running and planning to run the operation. Now, I've, I've gone as far as I'm gonna go with you. Ask questions about his testimony. His testimony was not about affordable units.
He did mention affordable units in his testimony.
That's not the gist of the test, the testimony by the architect. This stuff is, this kind of action is gonna stop. You have a chance later to say anything you need to, in the comments section. This is not that section.
Okay, in your testimony, you said it's fully sprinkled, fully sprinkled for fire safety, right? Okay. So you're confident that it's fire-safe completely, sprinkles in the halls, sprinkles in the closets or, you know, crawl space or whatever?
We meet, we will meet every building and fire code that's applicable to this building by the state of New Jersey and the township of Franklin.
Okay, all right. You talked about package delivery, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the package room is right on the lobby?
It's right off the lobby, yes.
Right off the lobby? Is it like a coded type thing where people could, you know, Amazon or whatever, lockers?
Uh, we don't know yet, but it'll be the type of thing where people, when they get a package and it's delivered while they're at work or wherever, they'll, they'll get a text message that when they come home, there's a package waiting for them and they can retrieve it either through building staff or through an Amazon locker. We're not at that level of detail yet.
Okay. And you said it's like a fully modern residential building, it's fully staffed. Is there a staff overnight?
That is not an architectural question. Now, I'm, I'm about to ask you to sit down.
Okay, well, um, an architectural question, okay. An architectural question. The building on the, say, Eastern Avenue side, right, which would be what, the north side that you designed?
Yes.
That building, as it's designed, on that side will not get any sunshine, is that correct?
Um, north is a little bit at an angle. If you look at the bottom of my plan on the screen, there's a little round arrow at the bottom left-hand corner, and north is actually at a slight angle to the top left-hand corner of the drawing.
Okay, so when I've shopped it, stop and shop, I haven't seen any sun on the building, on, on the Kmart.
Well, it, it will get some eastern, early morning sun.
Eastern, but not northern. I mean-
Well, again, north is at a slight angle to the building.
Right, but the, the apartments won't get any sun.
They'll get, the, the side, Eastern Avenue side will get some morning sun.
Really?
Yeah.
Do you have bay windows jutting out, so they'll get some? I don't understand, sir.
Well, the sun rises in the east.
Right.
And east is, east would be, on the plan, it would be to the right-hand corner of the site. So sunlight will be hitting the face of that building in the morning and come around the back of the building instead on the west, which is toward the lower right-hand corner of that drawing.
Really? Now, let me ask you on the JFK side, going toward the back, that would be the, I guess that would be the, the west side of the building that you designed. Is it true as it goes back, as you go back further, especially in the winter, is it, the sun is lower, right? And those, many of those apartments will not get any sun, right? And there's trees, isn't there trees in the corner there going back? I mean, will they get any sun?
Which corner are you talking, I don't-
Okay, it would basically be the south, southwest, toward the southwest area.
For Kennedy?
Yes. They won't get any sun in the winter, right?
Uh, it depends on the type of trees, whether they're leaves-
Mr. Strauss, I don't see that situation being any different than any other thousands of houses that have been built in this town. Some of them get sun on one side, some of them don't get any, some of them get it on all four sides. Is your intention simply to delay the hearing?
No, it's not, no, it's not. But why don't you just vote, why don't you just vote for this thing now? Because we know that every, we know that every development has to be yes unless you have a large number of older folks who don't want a warehouse. Otherwise, everything is always a yes in, in Franklin, we know that.
Well, that's not an architectural question either. If there's any other people who would like to ask legitimate questions, please come forward. If not, then we'll close and move on to traffic.
Mr. Chairman, do any of the board members wish to ask the architect questions?
Any board members wish to ask a further question?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll next call Carl Penkey to come up and provide the traffic testimony.
As soon as you're ready, sir, we'll swear in. Do you swear the testimony about to give before this board is truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Certainly. For the record, my name is Carl with a K, Penkey, P as in Peter, E-H-N-K-E.
Thank you.
Mr. Penkey, for the purposes of being qualified in front of this board, could you provide the board with your experience in testifying either in front of this board or other boards and tell them about your licensure in New Jersey?
Certainly. So again, my name is Carl Penkey, I'm Vice President with Langin Engineering and Environmental Services. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as several other states. My area of expertise is traffic engineering, which I've been practicing for over twenty-eight years, and I've appeared in Franklin Township on numerous times in the past qualifying as such.
We'll accept his qualifications as an expert.
Thank you.
Soon the license is coming, everything's-
My license is coming.
Mr. Penkey, you prepared a traffic impact study for this application, correct?
I have.
And it's dated October of twenty twenty-three?
That is correct.
Uh, counsel, this is part of the submission with the application, do you need us to mark it as an exhibit as well?
Well, if we're gonna refer to it, maybe we can mark it anyway, if he's gonna refer to it during his testimony.
We'll call it A-12.
Sure.
So to begin with, Mr. Penkey, if you would just explain for the board and the audience what a traffic impact study is and how you arrive at that data, and then go into exactly what you've detailed in your report.
Certainly. So as a traffic engineer, our involvement is to evaluate the, the traffic flows, traffic implications associated with the project. In this particular instance, with the devariance request for the use, part of that evaluation is also to provide information and an evaluation of what change in use on this particular site or the granting of the change in use might mean with relation to development of the site under the, the existing zoning, in this case, the GB district. Preparation of a traffic impact study generally follows nationally recognized standards. Preparation of a traffic study involves a, an inventory of the existing access of a site, the adjoining roadways, traffic control devices, lane use and so forth. It also incorporates a sampling of traffic volumes. We do that by conducting traffic counts on the adjacent roadway on a representative day. Again, that's a sampling and we, and traffic does vary day to day, but in general, what we find as traffic engineers is any given, weekday is, particularly now, Tuesdays to Thursdays is representative, shows a representative flow. So we're just looking to identify levels of traffic, traffic patterns and so forth, and that's done as part of the traffic study. The traffic study then goes on to prepare traffic projections. Those traffic projections are used, are, are prepared utilizing nationally recognized and established standards. Those standards are actually maintained and published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and that's in a publication known as Trip Generation. It's currently in its, I think, eleventh edition. Basically, it's a clearinghouse or accumulation of data of actual traffic counts of, at various uses, and then a relationship, it provides a relationship of those traffic counts to the uses. So for instance, if we counted an office building, we relate the actual observed traffic coming in and out to the size of the office building, and then that's established in, in this database. In terms of residential, for single-family homes, we use the number of homes, for multifamily units, we use the number of units, and that's, that's basically the way the, the database is established. It is a voluminous database for residential development and commercial development. It is quite comprehensive and really does provide a really good basis for transportation professionals to provide estimates of traffic.
What's the name of that book?
Uh, it's called Trip Generation. And then, and then with regard to a particular site, we then need to understand where that traffic is coming to and from, and that's done by looking at existing traffic patterns in an area as well as a demographic analysis. In terms of residential development, we'll generally look at a municipality's journey to work data that's updated in the census data from time to time. For the same thing for, in terms of commercial development, we'll look at a market area, usually centers such as this, we'll look at like a five-mile surrounding market area. In this particular case, we actually have established traffic patterns, so we're able to actually see what the existing shopping centers' traffic patterns are for its commercial tenants, and we could do that a little bit. And then once we've accumulated that data, the snapshot of existing traffic volumes, the, the projected traffic, we assign that traffic to the road system and, and the driveways as proposed, or in this case, the driveways as exist, and prepare an analysis of the operation of, of driveways to determine how they're operating and whether it'll accommodate the flow of traffic to and from the site. In this particular case, also dispositive and important to this board is an evaluation of the comparative impact of development or redevelopment or reoccupancy, if that was possible, of the area, the site that is in the GB zone that's being demolished, and, and, and the intensity of traffic that might be generated under the GB zone versus the intensity of traffic, yeah. Right? It is on, right?
No.
Real close?
There you are.
Okay, sorry about that. So, so the pos, dispositive in the devariance case is that comparative analysis between what a residential use on this site would generate compared to build out under your GB zone. So we did do that and provided that. So I want to talk to those, those things tonight. I also had an opportunity to review the, the engineer's review letter, the CME review letter, I believe that was dated February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four, so there's a thing or two that I'd like to talk about in there. So, so let's start with the use part of this. So in the traffic engineering world and in the real world, the comparison of commercial development to residential development, basically, commercial development is in the categories of our highest traffic generators on an hourly basis, on a daily basis, on a weekly basis. Commercial development has always been known to be the highest traffic generation components of, of development. Residential development, on the other hand, is a little bit more moderate, particularly on a square foot to square foot or unit to square foot basis. In this particular case, your GB zone would, would basically permit the area that's being developed of the residential area to provide, and, and we know this by fact since the building exists, upwards of a hundred and six thousand square foot of retail space. That's what's proposed to be removed, the old Kmart building. It's being replaced by two hundred residential units. So on a, on a straight comparison standpoint, in terms of consideration of this board as to whether we're intensifying the site, keeping the site relatively the same from a traffic standpoint, or actually, in this case, reducing the impacts, potential impacts from the site, the, the general numbers we look at are, represent your, your peak hours. As traffic engineers, we want to look at the peak commuter hours when traffic on the roadway system is the highest, AM peak hour, people going to and from work, the PM peak hour when people coming to and from work and starting to do their daily evening activities. Since there is retail on this site, we also took a look at the side of the midday peak hour when people are active shopping and, and when there certainly would be some activity associated with the residential. And then we did take a look at overall daily and weekend traffic generation. So from a straight standpoint, removing the area that is currently in the GB zone that could accommodate that rough, little over a hundred could accommodate that rough little over 100,000 square feet and developing it with 200 residential units on a straight comparison of the 100,000 or so retail to the 200 residential units, what you'll see is roughly 90 to 100 less vehicles per hour generated at the driveways coming in and out of the site in the morning peak hour. You'll see over 400 to 500 less trips coming in and out of this site during the evening peak hour, one-hour period. Over the course of a day, a weekday, there's over 5,000 less vehicles that would enter and exit this site with a residential use on this site versus reoccupancy of the 100,000 or rebuilding of the 100,000 square feet or so of retail. And then Saturday, of course, which is your highest generation days for retail, there could be close to over 7,000 less vehicles entering and exiting this driveway. Now, to be fair, that's at the driveways. We do know that retail does have a component of its traffic that is captured from the passing traffic stream, and that's about 25%. So if you actually factored that in in terms of an off-site impact as you move away from the site to the east and west or north and south on Eastern Avenue or to the west and south on JFK Boulevard, if you factored those numbers down by about 25%, that would be your off-site impact and not what we have to accommodate at the driveways. But you could still do the math quickly and see that we are talking about substantially, substantially less traffic impact to the adjacent roadway with the granting of the use variance for the 200 units versus this site being reoccupied, redeveloped with a higher level of commercial retail space.
So just one or two things here. First of all, all of what you've said so far is completely theoretical, right? You didn't take any kind of car counts at any point on any street. Is that correct?
Well, the traffic study, as I said, we did sample the existing center, which has the vacancy in it. It is theoretical in terms of the comparison, but it is using the databases that all transportation professionals use to project the amount of traffic and in terms of residential and retail traffic projections, it is relatively accurate. As I said, the database is very, very strong for those uses.
And unless I'm completely mistaken, that book is written by your colleagues, in other words, people that are in the same business that you're in?
So it's the transportation profession that gathers the data and shares it with the Institute of Transportation Engineers that vets the data and then documents it and makes it available to professionals, the transportation agencies, the design agencies, consultants that need that data.
And they're all traffic engineers. Is that correct?
Traffic transportation planners, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Right.
Yep. So you know, that's the general rule comparison. The other component of traffic is where is that traffic going to and from? Now, the existing, and with regard to JFK Boulevard, where it leads down into your residential neighborhoods, that's probably the bigger area to focus. The existing shopping center, the stop and shop, the uses that are in there today, approximately 40% of the traffic generated that go into and out of the site today travel to and from the south and west on JFK Boulevard. With regard to the residential development, it will have a different pattern because you have a pattern of people going to and from work, more oriented regional roadway system, I-280 off of Eastern Avenue, down into New Brunswick on Eastern Avenue. So the actual distribution that we expect from the residential is about half that, about 20% of the traffic would head down JFK Boulevard. So what that means in terms of maybe some comparative numbers is heading down or traveling two-way on JFK Boulevard to the south and west of the site, you would expect the residential development to generate in the morning just under 20 trips, two-way trips total. A retail reuse of the site would generate about 55 trips going up and down JFK Boulevard toward the residential area. In the PM, it's more dramatic because retail is more active in the PM, and we would expect just over 20, about 21, 22 trips for the residential being generated heading up and down JFK Boulevard, while the retail would generate approximately 166 trips. And it makes sense because retail is drawing from the residential neighborhoods, from the people that live there that need to shop in the shopping centers.
Now, hold on. Now, did you say that in the morning, the apartments would generate only 20 trips?
Less than 20 trips on JFK Boulevard heading to the west. The rest would be heading to Eastern Avenue.
Okay. Well, what's the total number of trips you think would be generated? I think there's probably going to be 400 cars for the people that are living there.
So what we know is, you know, in terms of residential development, your flow of traffic is dispersed. It's dispersed over a timeframe. So like if you're leaving to go to work in the morning, you don't all get in the car at 8:00 and leave. You don't turn over 400 cars at once.
Thank God, right.
People start leaving at 6:00 in the morning, 7, 8, 9. With COVID, that's changed a little bit. Some people are staying home. Some people are going in at 10:00. Some people go to a meeting. So that's actually even reduced traffic generation further. So we expect leaving this site in the morning over the course of a one-hour period, about 65 vehicles exiting the site.
Really? Only 65 vehicles?
65 vehicles.
And what did you estimate as the total number of vehicles being occupied in that apartment building? How many vehicles do you think that that will generate, that that will house?
In terms of actual parked vehicles?
Yeah.
Sure. So we also have a database published by the Institute of Transportation.
Of course you do, right.
It's known as Parking Generation.
Yep.
It's in its sixth edition, and again, it's an accumulation of actual parking counts done at similar type facilities that's documented in the clearinghouse by the institute and made available to transportation professionals. So we would expect, based upon the, what we call the 85th percentile calculation, so it's the high, it's where we would be seeing the peak, the design volume, just over 300 vehicles parked, about 318 vehicles.
Can I please ask a question?
Sure.
I'm always curious when we hear these traffic reports. It's very easy to go on your computer and your database. We're talking about real life. So wouldn't it be more accurate for residential traffic to monitor the traffic from all the residential buildings behind, off JFK to see where those people go, how many people leave their home, at what time, and more accurate than guessing? You're guessing at it.
No, we're not guessing. As I said, the database that we are using is actual, actual traffic counts. It's a database of actual traffic. So it's not a guess.
How do you know where people are going? Whether they're going on JFK or they're going on Eastern Avenue?
So we do that by demographic analysis of journey to work, where people that live in the town generally work. You also look at the existing traffic patterns and you use that to evaluate where traffic will flow to and from. And all of this data is available to your professional to review. This is not anything that's not done every day by transportation planners across the country.
I know this. We hear it all the time.
Sure.
But I always ask, how about the personal involvement of looking where traffic goes, stand there for a day and see what goes on? You haven't done that.
Well, it's baked into the data. We did count the existing driveways. As I said, we did record the patterns going in and out of the existing stop and shop and tenants that are there, and 40% of the existing shopping centers' traffic is heading down JFK Boulevard. So we did use, we do have that data and that's documented for the review of your township professionals.
I'm talking about the new residential traffic, not the existing.
So the residential traffic doesn't exist on the site, so we use the available professional data that's recognized in the industry as being what's used for design purposes and the supporting demographic data. There's, it's fairly scientific.
But it's not real life?
It is real life.
So is it very specific to that area? Is this data specific to that road?
The demographic data is specific to Franklin Township. The traffic generation is a database collected nationally, but we've found that it is very representative of New Jersey traffic generation from retail. In fact, the database includes many communities that has been contributed from New Jersey sites. So the database reflects data that's been submitted by professionals across the country. But we have found through the years when we've gone out and monitored site that it is representative.
And does it factor, so whatever your sample size may be, or whatever the sample may be that goes into that data, there might be some specific conditions that exist within that town that may make somebody go left, right, or, you know, take a particular path versus, and that may be different in different towns?
Correct. That's the distribution. That's not the generation. And the distribution is done by looking at the demographic data, where people work, what the travel routes are. We all have great tools now. You have Google Earth. You can look at the site, which is what we do. For instance, the demographics data says so many people work in Somerville. You could use Google Earth. It shows you the route that somebody from this site would take there based on the time of day, and then you plug it in and go. So we actually have way better tools than we had 10 years ago as traffic consultants to determine the paths that people take. And it also factors in the changed world, that there are now routes that people never knew in the past that are finding it. And that's baked into the calculations we do.
So just one last question, I'm sorry, because I'm curious.
So the demographic data is the census data?
Fair enough, but does the demographic data know where I work?
It has a general, it has an analysis of people that live in Franklin Township where they work. So it's Franklin Township and generally where people that live in Franklin Township is working, yes.
Because at least I have not ever had a census that asks me or my family that tells me where I'm working.
It's part of the census.
If there is a question on the validity of the model, like how good it is in terms of determining the traffic patterns, since there is an apartment complex right next to where this is being proposed, would it be worthwhile or is there already traffic data generated to see how many units are in that development and whether or not the actual pattern matches your model?
Would it be done? Sure. I mean, it exists if we can identify from the township the number of units, yes, because that is what, that is the data we use, counts that have been done at multifamily facilities, single-family housing, whatever, commercial, and have been documented by IT, yes. If you can isolate a use, it can be counted, yes.
What does the manual say and the demographics say? The people who, you said there were, what, 300 cars parked in the development?
Yeah, based upon the ITE parking generation accounts, it indicates that we could expect the peak parking accumulation, just over 300 cars, about 318 cars.
Right. So what do the rest of the people do?
That's the demand by 200 units.
And it's 65 per hour.
Let me just ask you a different question. He asked you, what do the other people do? What are the 80 people doing? Do they sit home?
No, as I said, your flows associated with a residential development ebbs and flows. It starts at 6:00 in the morning. There's people going out from 6:00 to 7:00, 7:00 to 8:00, 8:00 to 9:00, some people coming back. Your traffic flows in your communities throughout the day. If you go to any of the apartment complexes, your own neighborhoods, your residential neighborhoods, there's going to be some cars in a driveway, there's going to be some cars that are gone for the day. And that's, you know, basically works. There'll be some days that you're working from home, but you went to work. But that's all reflected in the data, and that's the ebbs and flows. The peak parking for residential development occurs at night, generally when people are home.
What you're saying then, that it could be more than 300 cars involved at the complex, but at any one time during the day, that's what you likely find parked there?
You would find, that 318 for residential would be what you would probably see sometime after 8:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning. You would see it less during the day as people have left the site.
I've heard a lot of these reports over the years. I'm not trying to be...
I understand.
I understand what happens to the, there's 200 apartments.
Correct. And not everyone has two vehicles, not everyone has a vehicle. What we know, what we know for multifamily development, the parking demands are ranging someplace from 1.2 per unit up to 2 per unit. And that's generally at the, the residential site improvement standards set the peak parking inclusive of visitor parking at 1.5 per unit. For two bedrooms, it's 1.8 per unit. That's based on studies done by the Department of Community Affairs. That's your ordinance. That's your ordinance. And it works because it provides enough parking to safely accommodate the peak demands.
So the standards would, for this development, would call for what, 150 parking spaces if it were in one?
No. So you've got the 200 units.
250, I mean.
Yeah, the 200 units. The standards are actually calculated on the site plan. You have 69 one-bedrooms that would be parked at 1.5 per unit, the 123 two-bedrooms that would be at 1.8 per unit, I believe it is. I believe those are the numbers. I have to go recheck them on the plan. And then the couple of three-bedrooms, I think, is at 2.0 or 2.1 or something like that. But that's generally how the calculation is done to identify that the parking that's needed to support it. And that's not designed for every last space to be used. It's generally designed so that there's excess spaces because you don't want a situation where somebody's coming in and he's circling in through a parking lot to find that last parking space. And it's also set to provide for the needs of visitor spaces.
So what is it, excuse me, what is the 65? Is the trips is for a peak time?
That's for a peak, for the peak hour. So in a one-hour period in the morning, generally occurring, the roads peaking in this area about 7:15 to 8:15, during that hour, we would expect to see about 65 vehicles associated with the 200 units leaving the site, going out to do their daily work. And we would expect probably about 20, I think it's about 20 vehicles coming back from wherever they might be going.
Does your software know that I used to have two cars, now I only have one car? So this one car traveling out of my development when I leave?
Well, it reflects the general demographics and characteristics of residential, which reflect, you know, the varying occurrences by different family units. Sure. People do different things, yes.
Yeah, I just think the software is very impersonal and not actual.
It is actual because it's based on actual traffic data collection, actual traffic counts of residential communities, of commercial communities. And it has been found to be very accurate for the purposes of understanding and designing safe access, safe roadways, safe facilities and parking.
Okay. Based on your findings, are you going to recommend, let's put it this way, is the site circulation plan adequate or does it need improvements? Are you going to recommend any traffic control measures anywhere?
So that's the second part. The traffic study did run through an analysis of the driveway system. There is two driveways, obviously, to the site. There is the right turn-in, right turn-out driveway on Eastern Avenue. Eastern Avenue along the frontage had been widened in the past when Rutgers Plaza was built. It has the third lane that runs along the front of the site. And then the driveway on John F. Kennedy Boulevard, which aligns somewhat opposite the jug handle from Eastern Avenue, provides for right turn inbound movements, as you aware, left turns in are restricted at that location, and it provides for right turn out and left turn out. So we have done an analysis with the projection of reoccupy, or the McDonald's being completed and reoccupied, the 200 units being fully occupied and the retail development, the stop and shop which is there, of those driveways. When we do that analysis, traffic engineers basically go through a modeling, which calculates in various factors, the traffic flow, peaking factors on the roadway, certain geometric conditions, and the result of that And the result of that results in delay calculations, which are then related to what we call levels of service. In terms of levels of service, the gradation is basically like an old grade school report card. It runs from A to F. A, obviously, being very good levels of service, very little delay. F being poor levels of service, some delays, some queuing. It could mean a few different things. At a traffic signal, it might mean that when you get to the traffic signal, you see the light green, you come up at the end of the, the queue, but you don't get through, and you have to wait to the next signal. That, that, that would be representative of an E or an F level of service. At a unsignalized driveway, it might mean that you're two or three cars back waiting as each person waits for a gap to enter the traffic stream into your term. So you, so you might be there for a little bit of delayed time as you move forward in the queue. It doesn't mean that everything's stopped. It doesn't mean that everything is, is locked up. So in terms of the levels of service, the driveways on Eastern Avenue are projected to continue to operate at what we call Level of Service C, which is a good level of service. It's generally considered a design level of service. With regard to the JFK Boulevard entrance, basically, right turns in are unimpeded, will flow into the site as they do today. The right turns out also are generally unimpeded, operate at good levels of service. They're certainly influenced by the traffic signal at Eastern Avenue. There's sometimes that queue comes back towards the driveway, but then clears out. But the right turns out work, work relatively well. The, the weakest movement is the left turns exiting the driveway. And I'm sure you've all gone to stop and shop, and whatever time of day you may be able to get right out. And then there's some times a day where you might have to wait a vehicle. You might be two vehicles back. Basically, what we're seeing is in the morning peak hour, it operates at what we know as Level of Service E with capacity remaining. So it's, it's, it's while you're being delayed, you're getting out. During the PM peak hour, it is into the, what, F range, which means you may be back. You may see queues of about four vehicles that you're going to progress through. And then on Saturday, it's actually in the E level of service. So when you see something like that, you do evaluate whether or not additional or, or changed traffic control may help the situation. CME, in their review letter, suggested we, we do a warrant analysis and consider whether a traffic signal is appropriate at that location. Yes, I will. So when you look at changing a regulation or regulatory device that controls traffic, transportation professionals follow the, a document that's published by the Federal Highway Administration, which is known as the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It is the governing document for the use, the appropriate use of regulatory devices throughout the country. It is, there are standards. So, so in terms of when you use a stop sign, when you use no parking signs and so forth, it lays out those situations, and engineers rely on those and use those to determine the appropriate use. In terms of changing traffic control from a yield to a stop, to a traffic signal, a traffic signal has a, is a, has a whole analysis that needs to be done to determine whether it's appropriate. Because traffic signals aren't panaceas. They're not always appropriate for use. So in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the initial, the originals, the, the beginning section talks to what's known as warrants. There's a series of, I think it's 12 or 14 warrants that run through conditions that must, must, it's not look at it. It's must be met in order to certify by an engineer that a signal is warranted at a location. So that's why they've asked us to consider doing, doing a warrant analysis. So those warrants involve the levels of traffic, both on the driveway and on the highway. It, it, it evaluates various conditions. There's, the initial three warrants are, which is what's mostly used, is what's known as a peak hour warrant. You look at the flows that are happening at a peak hour, and if you meet certain volumes, you would meet the peak hour warrant. Transportation professionals and, and agencies generally don't accept the peak hour warrant alone as being satisfactory because it's a one-hour period, and it's generally recognized that you can have times of a day where you have some delays that dissipate during other times of the day. Where a peak hour warrant is usually accepted by transportation review agencies, and approving a traffic signal would be in unique situations such as an industrial building that lets everybody out at five o'clock, and we have to clear out a parking lot. That's generally where that warrant comes into play. We then go into what's known as a four-hour warrant, which looks at the highest four hours during a day to see if we meet volume criteria. We then go into an eight-hour warrant. Usually, if you meet, if you, if you don't meet a peak hour warrant, you're not going to start reading those four-hour warrants. We will agree to, to do the warrant. I, I can tell you, though, I have looked at the peak hour warrant at the intersection, and we do not meet a peak hour, or not even close. So I don't expect, once we go through a full warrant analysis, that we will be in a position where a traffic signal could be approved at that location by an engineer. So the intersection currently operates. Those delays that occur will occur. But again, those, 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 those delays, the location and the intersection's all established, and, and it exists.
How would your recommendations change if this were 100% retail?
It, it, it depends. Obviously, retail would generate more traffic. Reoccupancy of the building wouldn't automatically trigger a signal at that location because there's no obligation to re-review that, that site. But the higher levels of traffic might trigger a traffic signal. But again, a traffic signal is, is not a panacea. There's issues with a traffic signal, particularly at that location. We have a traffic signal at New Brunswick. We have a traffic signal at Eastern. They're both relatively close. You know, putting a traffic signal just at a commercial driveway in between may or may not have a negative influence on those locations. So it's not, it's not a simple, just put a traffic signal, world is solved. There's other influencing factors that need to be considered. In this case, I don't think a traffic signal would be appropriate because of the condition. There are some benefits associated with how the flow comes from Eastern Avenue. There are periods where there's no westbound flow because of the, the traffic is stopped, and the lefts are stopped on, on Eastern Avenue. And there are periods when, when traffic from the west is controlled by New Brunswick Avenue. So there is some gapping happening, happening out here. And then the design of the intersection is also interesting. Whoever originally designed it, they created that little median area, which gives sort of the ability to stage your way out, which provides some benefits that are not actually reflected in our model also. But that's not to say. You guys all drive it. I've driven it. There are times when you hit it and you wait a vehicle and, and left out. That condition is not going to go away. It's going to remain. I would suggest it's not going to, with, with the residential development, it's not going to be substantially different than what you experienced today.
Hey, how about the circulation plan within the?
Yeah, I think Mr. Turner really spent a lot of time on his design and testified to his design. I, I would say that the plan as presented by, by Mr. Turner does incorporate a substantial improvement in onsite circulation. You know, some of the key elements that I like about the plan is the realignment of the central inbound and outbound lane from Eastern Avenue, which now currently terminates at the face of a retail building, rather than, as, as it's now been designed, serpentines a little bit to feed the, the commercial development, the stop and shop, and the retail that, that remains in the, in the fitness center. So I think that's a great design element. Mr. Turner's also added a substantial amount of pedestrian accommodation throughout this site. There are a lot of sidewalks being added and, and proper connectivity directly to stop and shop, out, out, out through the parking lot, connecting to the adjacent retail. So those, those elements are, are all appropriate. The remaining portions of it really are, are per standards. Your parking lots are, are designed in accordance with appropriate standards. 24-foot aisles, nine-by-18 parking spaces. There's nothing unique or unusual about them, and they're all, and those standards are all established to create safe traffic flow. The other thing I, I would note that I, that I like about the plan is, if you recall how the Kmart is, when you come in from the driveway on JFK Boulevard, you, you immediately hit the multiple ends of parking aisles. I think there's four of them. He's tightened those down. There are now only two, reducing the points of conflict on that segment of road coming in from JFK Boulevard to the, what I would call, I guess, the east-west circulation aisle from Eastern Avenue. So there are some good improvements in, in design elements that have been incorporated into this site. Certainly McDonald's, the, the planning board vetted that and have incorporated design elements that are under construction in, in that, that portion of the site. So overall, I think it's an enhancement. The, the site, I think, is improving.
Tell me exactly how you established the levels of service of C and F. Did you have somebody out there counting cars?
Yes. So the traffic study documents the traffic counts that were taken at the driveways. So that's the base. We then project that forward. We put some growth on that. We added in the traffic generation from McDonald's, and, and that was documented in a traffic study that was considered by the planning board. So we added that back in, and then we add in the traffic that we estimate will be generated by the residential development. And then there's a modeling procedure. And, and that modeling procedure, again, is, is, is the modeling procedure used by all transportation professionals. It's not mine. It's not a guess. It is calculated. It has been, become quite complex over the years. It factors in an awful lot of data, an awful lot of the conditions in order to try to become as scientific and accurate as possible. What I started in my career 28 years ago, we did these calculations on basically a piece of paper and with some, some rough numbers. And quite frankly, we're pretty much getting the same answers we had when, when we were doing it back then because capacity is capacity. You know the roadway capacity. You're able to basically relate the demand to the capacity.
I have one. As part of your analysis, did you look at any crash history on Eastern or JFK?
I did not, no.
Why would that not be something you typically include in your report?
We don't typically look at it. You know, in this case, we were, we were more focused on the comparative traffic generation associated with a D variance, and then, and then supplemented that with the driveway analysis. In, in this case, I think the more dispositive analysis is really the change in use and what it means. If we, if we were intensifying the use and gener, if we were going the other way, from residential to commercial, then we would be looking at this a little bit differently. We'd be looking at off-site impacts. We'd be looking at, does the driveways and access need to change? In this case, we have an established center. At one time, generated much higher levels of traffic, and the driveways were designed for that, and we're re, we're regenerating at a much lower level. So that's the way we prepared the traffic study.
Understood. That makes a lot of sense. I would counter that by saying that this is a use variance. And as your planner will attest to, the, the benefits need to significantly outweigh the detriment. So I would recommend that we do include some sort of crash analysis, and which would further substantiate the benefit to this, to this surrounding area.
Sure. We could, we can request, what we do is we go to your police department. You have it on record, and we'll request three years of data and, and see what it says.
Questions?
Actually, that was actually one of my suggestions that the crash data to be figured out, especially on that left onto JFK, because even now, I know it's acting as an F or an A. Taking that turn now is still tough. And even though the old use is, was permitted with a higher den, higher intensity, it's still going to add more traffic, and even now, there's issues that are just seen there. So I think you should take some extra time on that. Just in terms of the base counts, everybody's aware. They did do the accounts in June of 2023. So it was done during school traffic and everything else as well. That's one, one of the things that we did evaluate just to make sure. It wasn't during, done during a COVID time either, because that would be more restrictive on what we'd be seeing. But I would like to still see the warrant analysis on that turn, because I think we're going to have some safety issues there potentially. And also, just in terms of peak hour, with your retail use, I think the peak hour might be, the roadway peak hour network would be the same, but I don't think you'd see as much peaking in the, like, I think you said the peak hour was 7:15 to 8:15?
In the morning.
In the morning, correct. I don't think your retail peak hour would be there entering, from the site entering the roadway, not the roadway network itself. So when you're looking at that comparison, I just want to say that the afternoon is going to reflect the worst of the conditions, as you said.
The afternoon and Saturday are more dispositive, and the daily, I think, is, is dispositive. Obviously, there's a lot more interactive in-in-out flow associated with the commercial development rather than a residential development.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure the board is aware.
Sure. I, I don't disagree with that statement.
Here's why I'd like you to take a hard look at a stoplight on Kennedy. You examined it or testified us in relation to left turns out of your project on the Kennedy Boulevard. The reality there is that there are a great number of left turns coming across the, from across the intersection.
We have that data too.
Well, I want to make sure because a few years ago, there's a lot of people that live in that apartment complex. Used to be east and north, and have to make a U-turn there to get on Eastern Avenue to go toward 287. And it, it was such a problem a few years ago. Their association actually owned a property on New Brunswick Road that bordered the back of their development, and they came into the planning board with the idea of extending their main driveway through that property out to New Brunswick Road to avoid that, that left turn. So there, there are conflicting movements there.
Correct, and that is factored into the analysis. So what I will do is I will share the, the peak hour analysis we did with CME. I'm pretty sure they're going to draw the same conclusion. I, I would love to spend my client's money and, and tell you that, you know, because it would be very easy for me to say, hey, and by the way, we're generating less traffic, and we're going to, we're going to put a traffic signal in, and, and I'd leave it to your board professionals to advise you also. We have to follow the rules. We, you know, if you don't meet a warrant, and an engineer can't certify the warrant, you can't install the signal. It's just, it's as simple as that. And, and, and you see it all the time in the news. We're trying to get a signal here. We're getting, trying to get a signal here. Trying to get a signal here. There's no such thing as a political warrant. There's no such thing. If an engineer can't put a seal on it and say it meets warrants, it, it's, it can't be an authorized device. It is a regulatory device that has legal obligations. And as I said, it also, one of the reasons is because signals do have their own problems. They increase rear-end accidents, as I said, in, in a system of signals that could create other issues. So we are very careful when we do that. It's one of the reasons why you're starting to see a lot more roundabouts.
Doesn't meet the requirements. It doesn't meet the requirements. I just want to make, wanted to make sure.
We'll make sure your engineer has the data and, 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 yes.
Because that isn't just a one-sided left turn, so to speak. It's, it's almost like a four-way intersection.
It's a four-way intersection, yes.
Any other questions?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman, over here. When you evaluated the, the retail versus the residential scenarios, did you make any different assumptions on trip distribution? The percentage of people that would make left or rights out of the different intersections?
Yes, as I testified to before, we, we, there, there is a different distribution for the residential versus the commercial. The commercial has a lot higher distribution going down into your residential neighborhoods on JFK Boulevard. The residential has a higher orientation to Eastern Avenue, to the regional roadways heading towards New Brunswick or heading towards I-287.
Okay. May I thank you?
And that makes sense. It's logical. People are traveling to distances.
Any other questions? All right, then. We're open to the public. Again, questions on traffic, I'm sure that has a high interest from everybody.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. My name is Melissa Edo. I live at One Evergreen Road, Somerset, so right off of JFK, around the traffic patterns that he is speaking about. I have really one specific two-part question for the traffic expert. My first question to you, and I'll give you a little bit about my background very briefly. So I am a principal consultant and software architect, so not specifically around traffic or architecture, but an expert on data science. So with that said, my first question to you, the first part of my question would be, when you did the comparison on residential versus commercial in the proposed site, and you said that the traffic patterns and your data model and analysis showed that it would go down versus a commercial site, that, you know, you based it on roughly a 100,000-square-foot commercial versus a 200 apartment complex residential, resulting with your data model calculations of 318 cars for that site. My question was, what was the assumption of the commercial based upon? What type of commercial establishment?
Shopping center. It's a retail shopping center today, so the GB's owed a... It's a retail shopping center today, so the GB zone would allow, you know, Kmart or, or other commercial tenants that are permitted in the GB zone. So, so there is a general database for department store and shopping center, basically the same. So it's, it's based upon, if I was designing this from, from, from scratch, it's the data we would use to design this center.
Okay, so general, nothing specific about the type of commercial?
Well, that's always, it's always the case. It's, you know, where, where you get striations in, in, in commercial development and differentiations is like a supermarket. A supermarket is a higher generator. But in this case, we know what the supermarket's generating because we, we got traffic counts. Not likely we're going to get another supermarket here. You'll probably get a general commercial, another like Kmart if it's possible. We've heard the testimony of the difficulties in trying to accomplish that. But in general, a shopping center is generally made up of a, a mix of different types. Could be some restaurants, could be pizza. All of those come together. They all have a little bit of varying generations, but when they come together at that size, what we find is the general level of traffic that's generated and we, and that we can project utilizing the database.
Okay, thank you. The point there obviously being that depending on the assumption for the commercial model would highly or very significantly statistically impact your projection that it's actually going to be lower than what a residential would bring.
I, I, I can confidently say, given the size, even if you were to take the 100,000 and reduce it by half, we would still, we would still have a calculation that showed the residential to be substantially lower generator. It is just as a use, a lower generator than commercial. For instance, McDonald's is a very high generator. It captures a lot of its traffic from the adjacent roadway, but it is probably generating traffic very close to what the residential would generate. We all go to McDonald's. We see the flow of traffic in and out of those types of uses. They are high generators.
Okay, thank you. And then the second part to that question, and thank you for answering the first, I thank the board for bringing up the point about the traffic studies and accidents. I think that's a very valid point and concern for the community as a whole. My question or my request to the board and to you, in addition to any traffic studies just in general around that area, are we able to add a statistical analysis on the number from police reports or whatever records we may have about the number of accidents that are linked to residential travel? So, you know, people on the weekends, things of those nature, and how much that might contribute to additional accidents? And I'm specifically very interested because I live right on that road.
Yeah, the accident data, when we obtain accident data, we actually get, the accident reports, I'm sure, I hope you haven't had one.
I haven't. There's been plenty behind my house though, which is why I asked.
The accident reports are detailed on the accident, the location, the cause. It doesn't go into what your trip was. So I don't know how you would do that or whether it'd even be dispositive or anything. What we'll look for in the accident data is to see if there's a, a, a recurring pattern that's correctable by a geometric improvement or regulatory device improvement. You know, for instance, with the driveway, if we're seeing, you know, 15 left-hand turn, right angle accidents, it's something that, you know, is, is saying there's a problem there. Maybe it's a sight distance problem or something like that. You know, if we're seeing rear end accidents, it probably is the traffic signal and people are not paying attention. Swerves and so forth these days is related to cell phone use. You'll, you'll find that out. So that's what we'll look for in terms of the statistical analysis to see if there's something that's in there that's correctable. Sometimes it, you know, you'll, you'll see, you're always going to see accidents. I have no doubt I'm going to find accidents here. At traffic signals, you'll always find, you know, 15, 20 accidents a year. They occur.
Yeah, specifically, and I guess I'll be very blunt, I'm an ex-New Yorker, I'll be, be very transparent about that. But specifically my concern, can you guys hear me still? Specifically, my concern is, will putting a 200 residential unit in there increase accidents that could be more residentially related? DUIs, partying on the weekend, people tired coming home from work versus, you know, unless it's a, a bar or a restaurant or things of those nature, I am specifically concerned that increased residential traffic up and down that street that I live on could result in more social residential related type accidents and overall more increase in accidents and potentially fatal accidents on that road.
Okay, that's kind of like a comment that should come at the end, but we want to let you finish, but that should be enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kiki Anastasikos, excuse me, 3204 Enclave Circle. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask my questions. And thank you, Mr. Pinky, for your very enlightening report. And I remain hopeful that with so many sophisticated databases and models, we will be able to solve all the traffic congestion problems in Franklin and in Somerset County, particularly on Eastern Avenue, because that's where the problem is. And this particular study that you just did happens to be right on Eastern Avenue. So here is my, my question. Are you aware or have, were you made aware before you started the study that Eastern Avenue is, has the most fatal accidents? And of course, many of the previous speakers touched on this, but we happen to have the precarious honor of having the most traffic accidents in the entire Somerset County on Eastern Avenue. And so, so my question is, did you take into consideration? And did you have firsthand account outside of the databases? And by firsthand account, I mean, did you or your assistant or assistants personally drove during peak hours AM and PM on Eastern Avenue to determine the real, actual frustration that many of us who do use Eastern Avenue go through every single day? Sir?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to interpose an observation and or objection. We don't have benefit of any report that the individual is referring to. We don't know, for instance, she mentioned fatal accidents. Eastern Avenue is bigger than just the frontage of this site. And so those accidents could be anywhere. And I'm not sure how that is related to his testimony.
Okay, so my question then is, and I apologize for interrupting because you were ready to answer. When you do these traffic studies specifically for this particular project, are you looking at traffic, at, at what radius? What radius does your study include? Is it a five-mile radius? Is it a two-block radius? Because honestly, with the information you gave us, I have this, the, the feeling that you basically looked at that one block.
Right.
Eastern Avenue is our main thoroughfare. It does not exist in isolation with the rest of the town, sir.
That, that, that's correct. So in terms of an analysis, we, we specifically look at our driveways and the frontage. With regard to regional impact, I did talk to that. And I talked to the fact that the use, the change in use will reduce the ultimate, the prior existing as well as the potential future generation by commercial. So there's less of an impact on those very issues you're talking about in the potential regeneration from this site. So for instance, if for some reason this board denied this application and the world continued to change, you know, and, and, and our ownership, our client successfully fines retail tenants and is able to redevelop this site, which he's told us that we've had this problem, the problem has existed and he doesn't think he can, but under the existing zoning, he'd be able to do that. The level of traffic that would be generated as of right, without any obligation to do off-site improvements, would be much higher than the use. So there is a, there is, going to the positive and negative criteria, there is a positive to this application in terms of reducing, the building can always come down, so I won't use the word in perpetuity, but for a long time to come, the potential tra-, additional traffic generation from this site that the GB zone would otherwise permit occur. That's also subject to a success by our client, which he's explained to you the difficulties they're having.
Thank you. And are you aware of the fact that there is an ongoing study on Eastern Avenue funded by federal and state and county money?
There, there are many studies. I'm not familiar with any, any specific ones, but there's always transportation studies under, underway. So if there's a specific one that you think is, we should take a look at, I'd be happy to. To answer your prior questions too, yes, I am familiar with the site. I have visited the site specific to this project during, during peak hours, midday. But I am also a traveler along Eastern Avenue at different times of the day for different reasons on a less frequent basis. But I, I do, I am aware of Eastern Avenue from New Brunswick to 287.
Okay, good, thank you. That's good. Okay, so, so yes, there is a study which is funded and it will take several years that is funded by, you know, federal and county and state money because of the serious problem. And I, yeah, I was, apparently you did not, there's only one study and it's going to take probably up to five years to be completed. I'm sure the zoning, the esteemed members of the zoning board will be more able than I am to estimate when that completion will be. I was just one, so what you're saying is that you did not take that study into consideration when you did your traffic report?
I'm just going to say, the report is going to take five years to complete. By definition, he can't take that into account until it's complete.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. Okay, so my other question is, are you aware of another study which the township of Franklin has undertaken? This is a more recent one and it's from the Township Council. This is a study that's related to trucks, okay? And I mean, the 18-wheeler, the ones that are related to the Business and Industry Zone, which is really sort of bordering Eastern Avenue to one extent. And because so many residents of Franklin were complaining, for those of us who live in the Business and Industry Zone, about traffic, I mean, truck, specifically traffic congestion related and risks to safety associated with these trucks, we have an ongoing traffic study going on, which basically identified at least 10 major intersections that are, according to your, to the standards that you, that you give, they were given a grade of F. They fail for safety reasons. And would you agree with what some residents mentioned, that traffic is not something that you can isolate in one zone, such as the Business and Industry? And that these trucks and the traffic congestion, but particularly as it's generated by, by these trucks spills into and spills over into the rest of the township? We had a whole lot of people that testified to that who live in different parts of Franklin outside of the Business and Industry Zone. So did you take into, did you have a chance to take a look at the material and the information, excuse me, that is provided by that particular contractor that has been employed by the Township of Franklin? And was that study taken into consideration for your report? And the spillover of traffic from trucks, heavy trucks to Eastern Avenue?
Ma'am, a while ago, when you gave an answer before and you asked him if he had looked at any studies, he said he had looked at no studies.
Okay.
So, so you actually took five minutes to ask a question that's already been answered?
I'm sorry, I thought he only referred to the one previous study, the federal study.
All right.
Okay, this is a totally different study. And all I'm saying is that it, it's a little, anyway, I don't want to make a statement. I'll wait until the end. My next question has to do with traffic safety. And are you the person to ask a question on traffic safety or is there a different person that I need to wait for? Is?
You can ask the question.
I can ask the question. Okay, so there was a lady, the lady who's standing right behind me waiting to talk, that talked about a, a, a path that the residents of the area on JFK, that goes along JFK Boulevard, a walking path, right? I don't know if you were here and you heard that, but there is a walking path along JFK that they take in the morning to take their walk. And, and clearly there is a driveway, right, on JFK, on JFK Boulevard. So I'm guessing many of these people take a walk before they go to work, so it would be 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock, depending on when they go to work or when they go to school, et cetera. Do you think that the traffic generated, those 60 cars, would present a safety hazard for these neighbors that for years have been using this walk path to get their exercise?
No, the, the paths and sidewalks, there's a concrete sidewalk along our side of the road. There's actually a McAdams sidewalk across the other side. But at the driveways, there are appropriate controls, the driveway stop control, and there's appropriate ramps and markings for pedestrians. But a pedestrian in a driveway environment is in a crossing environment. And, you know, that exists throughout the world. So it's fine to accommodate. And that's just a matter of rules of the road. Motorists have to follow the rules of the road and the pedestrians have to follow the rules of the road.
Okay, so in this case, what kind of signs and measures would you take to reduce the risk to the life of pedestrians on JFK walk, walk path?
At, at our driveway, I believe the crosswalks exist. We could recheck that if they need to be repainted, but a stop signs and sidewalks and the, the crosswalks exist. So those elements are already incorporated in the driveway. I'd have to look at the plans to see if we're updating them or if they should be updated.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, and thank you for your patience. The 60, the number 60 for cars that you estimate as exiting the, this specific residential building, you identified it as between 7:15 and 8:15 AM, right? So there's 60 cars that exit during that hour. Yet, we all know, or all of us who are drivers and working folks know, that rush hour is from 7 to 9 or 6:30 to 9:30. And so then, why did you, I understand why you took the, the peak, that one hour, but if we multiply that by two or three, which is the, these days, the length of the morning rush hour, wouldn't that increase the number of cars by three, like 60 times three?
Well, so, so, yes, to answer directly, but we're looking, as engineers and in our analysis programs, we're looking at, we focus on the peak hour. So you're absolutely correct. There's flow, there's traffic flowing 24 hours a day. We do see generally a curve on, on roadways, particularly access roadways, where traffic starts to ramp up at 6:00 in the morning, peaks around 7, 7:30, 8, and then comes down around 10, little bit of bump at lunch, down in the afternoon, and then starts bumping up again 2, 3, 4 o'clock and hitting peak at 5. We look to find the top of that curve. So what we're seeing in our traffic count data is the top of that curve is generally happening from 7:15 to 8:15. happening from 7:15 to 8:15, so that's why we focus on that peak. So, and that's, and then we superimpose our peak on top of that. But there's absolutely, if, 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 if you have that peak here, that six to seven o'clock, there certainly could be forty, forty thirty, forty cars coming out of the site, seven, you know, from six to seven, and there certainly could be fifty, sixty cars coming out of this site from eight to nine. Those, those are sequential hours. But for analysis purposes, we wanna analyze the worst, because the other hours will be better.
Yes, sir. I, I totally understand that. But isn't it more realistic to say that during morning rush hour, there will be sixty times three, or let's just say conservatively, sixty times two, a hundred and twenty cars exiting from seven to nine, that particular location, rather than saying it the way you said it?
Well, you, you could look at it the other way, which is, you look at the daily traffic. On a daily basis, we're looking at roughly thirteen hundred trips associated with the residential coming in and out, versus over five thousand for the commercial, if it was reoccupied. So you could look at it twenty-four hour, you could look at it for three hours, but from an analysis standpoint, when we analyze the driveway to determine what's the proper traffic control, the models are all based upon the peak hour, because that's the worst case.
Sorry, that's correct. That's correct. The models, I understand, I don't know your profession, I, I respect it, but the majority of us, when we refer to traffic congestion, we talk about rush hour, okay? And so, all I'm saying is that could perhaps make more sense if you gave us the number of cars for the morning rush hour, from seven to nine, and include the peak. I'm just saying that the way you present it gives a less realistic and, and, and lower number of cars. That's all.
I think, I think what you're forgetting, though, is that it's a comparative analysis.
Right.
So, if he's going to double the, the, the traffic for, for the residential, since it's comparative analysis, he's also going to double the amount of traffic for the retail, because it's, it's always gonna be a comparative analysis.
Yes, but...
And he's choosing the worst hour for that analysis.
Yes, I understand, but compare, this exact comparison, with all due respect, is, is comparing apples and oranges, because the peak hour, 7:15 to 8:15, is not a peak hour for any retail, they're not even open at that time. So the peak hour would be ten, twelve, up to three o'clock, for someone who's going shopping.
And I think, and I think he said that, I think he, his testimony agrees with you. I believe he said that the afternoon peak was, is more depositive, I think that's the word, and the Saturday. He spoke to that. I think he said that the afternoon peak and the Saturday peak is more telling.
Okay.
If, was that your testimony?
Yes. Yes, I agree.
I'm not trying to say, but it's, 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 you can't, again, if you, if you double the, you know, if they take two hours of the morning for the, for the residential, then you have to compare it to the retail, which is gonna be doubled as well. So it's still gonna be that same order of magnitude. It may actually be worse, because I would think, perhaps, I don't know how many people go at 7:15 shopping, but they might go at 9:15. So, his numbers, he's gotta have more retail numbers if he goes later in the morning than... I know, I leave for work, I leave for work at seven o'clock. I don't go to Target at seven o'clock, but I'm not gonna Target at nine.
Okay.
So I, I'm assuming that, as you go later in the morning, there's gonna be more traffic for the retail. That's just the way we all operate.
Yeah. I, I, thank you. Thank you so much, and please, thank you for understanding that I'm not an expert on this. Thank you for allowing me so much time.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Elizabeth Tools, Tindalia Road, Somerset, New Jersey. My first question is, I just wanted to know if you could remind me of how many parking spaces have been earmarked, earmarked for this building for residents?
I don't have the specific breakout. There'll be a thousand, one thousand one hundred on the overall site, but I don't have them by parking field.
So you all allocated a thousand parking spaces while you're anticipating three hundred and fifteen vehicles?
No, that's, that's for the entire site, including the retail.
Okay. So, I mean, that's still rather substantially over the projected three hundred and fifteen car amount.
That's also supporting the Stop &amp; Shop, the, the Chase, the retailers, so it's supporting the whole property.
But how many are just gonna be in that park where Kmart is?
I don't, I don't have that number. Mr. Turner went through those numbers, I think, two months ago.
The parking calculation for the residential use is three hundred and eighty-seven vehicles.
Three hundred and eighty-seven, okay. So, so based on what you're saying, just from the numbers, you're, the numbers that you put out, about the sixty-five cars estimating leaving during rush hour, you're saying that you anticipate that sixteen percent of those residents will actually go out in the morning for work during regular, normal hours?
Correct. Based upon, based upon patterns that are established, based on actual counts, it, people flow out over a course of time, three, four hour periods, so yes. And then some people stay home, some people go out and come back, so, yes.
So sixteen percent of the residents will be leaving there between seven and nine a.m.? And the rest, all the other eighty-four percent?
One hour period. That's a one hour period. The sixty-five vehicles that projected occurs in a one hour period. There could be sixty-five vehicles the following period, there could be sixty-five period, the prior one hour period.
Okay, so that...
Traffic flows over a period of time.
So the sixty-five people are for...
It's one hour.
For one hour. So then you're saying that a hundred and fourteen people were coming in every hour for the Kmart?
Correct.
Because I think if that was accurate, they wouldn't have gone out of business.
Well, it's for, it's for retailer of that size. Obviously, Kmart is, is out of business.
And let me just add that I have, one of three, we have two children, and up until the point that they went to college, we had four vehicles in front of our house. So I, I find it difficult to believe that this number's going to be accurate, if there's gonna be three-bedroom apartments, I'm sure there's gonna be high school students in addition to the, the people that are living there, but there's not an extensive busing system here, so they're going to need transportation. Also, my other question is, the traffic volume study that you have in your report, it, it says that you, I guess, assess the turning movement on June first, and you listed times, and on June third, and you listed times, is that accurate?
Those are the dates, yes.
Okay. But during June, Rutgers was out. This is called Rutgers Plaza. Rutgers is a very, I mean, Eastern Avenue leads right up to Rutgers main campus, so I'm trying to understand, why would you do the survey during the time when, when it's not really an accurate projection of what's happening?
There is some influence by Rutgers, there's no doubt. We started the study when we were engaged, and we caught it before the local schools were out, so got the data as soon as we could get it.
But Rutgers was out in May, and your study started in June?
I, I would not dispute that the traffic along Eastern Avenue may be a little higher, but they don't...
A little higher? Rutgers is substantially large.
Rutgers generates traffic throughout the day, that, that's, that's correct. In terms of overall traffic increases during the peak hour, it's probably not as influential as you think.
Okay. Also, in your report, you listed that, when you're listing your generated traffics, one of the things that I don't understand is, so you're stating that by putting in a retail, by putting a residential, that traffic will be less, because we won't have the retails coming in. But when I shop in that area, I generally visit multiple stores, so I will go to Stop &amp; Shop, I'll go to the Dollar Store, I might go to Crunch. So I guess my question is, won't that retail traffic still be coming in regardless, because it is still a retail area, regardless of whether you're putting up residential or not?
Correct. And that's factored into the projections, so that is factored into those numbers, that's, that those numbers are drawing and sharing. And in fact, that's part of what I think the testimony you heard from the owner was, one of the problems is, they're not able to attract a primary tenant that draws traffic that helps to support these other developments, which is one of the reasons why they wanna go to the, the residential, which will help bring a mass of population here that'll alternatively help to support the tenants in this facility. Yes, there is interaction between the different uses, but that is factored into the projection, it's reflected in the typical operation of a shopping center.
So my question is, you have like a hundred and fourteen down for Kmart, so you're saying that that number was reduced?
That, that, that reflects that that's the additional traffic that would be drawn by that space, and certainly those people that are drawn may also go to the tenants. And, and that's what's, what, that, that's, that's the purpose of an anchor like a Kmart. They would draw that traffic, but then that traffic may see the jewelry center, or may see the fitness center, or, or make a purpose to go there, and then go to the fitness center. So that's, that's the whole discussion you heard a couple of months ago with regard to the attempts to try to get anchors here, and the inability to do that, and what we're trying, what, what, what the residential does is an alternative way to create a, sort of an anchor that provides a permanent pool of people that will be interested in the Stop &amp; Shop and, and shopping there, and some of the uses there, the fitness center, or, or some of the other tenants, the, the food purveyors and so forth.
Okay, I guess where I have a problem, then, is in, your numbers are kind of skewed, then, because then you would also have to, it's like you're showing them as just coming in for Kmart, but you're not showing them as coming in, the residential's at twenty. But technically, the residential's gonna be more than twenty, if you add on people going to Stop &amp; Shop anyway, if you add on people going to the Dollar Store anyway. So you look at these numbers, and they seem like an extreme difference, but it's really not accurate, because I can, there's still, there's nothing saying the proposed residential plus the existing retail stores.
Yes, it, there is. The study addresses that last condition of, of how the driveways will be operated, and it is an apples-to-apples comparative comparison as to the additional traffic that would enter and exit the center, whether it was a hundred thousand square foot of retail versus two hundred residential units. And two hundred residential units will generate substantially less traffic than a, a retail use on this site.
Yeah, but they'll also generate retail also, because this is not going to be just a residential site, it will still be residential and retail.
Correct. And that retail will remain vibrant.
The retail numbers, yeah, the retail numbers that remain are not reflected in traffic for your report.
They're reflected as existing, so they're reflected based on the counts we did at the driveway, so they're, they're, they're there, period.
But your sixty-five number is only for the residential.
That's correct.
That's not actually what we're gonna see, because there's still gonna be people going into the other stores.
Correct.
So this is, and that's why I'm saying it's not really accurately comparing one scenario to the other, because your, your residential scenario is leaving out the fact that the retail is still going to gain traffic.
So, so the comparison, comparison then would be adding in the three hundred cars that are already coming into the site to the Kmart, or the additional traffic that I show would be associated with the commercial, compared to the, the sixty-five cars plus the three hundred cars. So it's still apples-to-apples. It's the same comparison, the delta is, the, the, either you're generating four hundred thousand square foot of retail additional on the site, or two hundred residential units. It's, it's the same comparison. Whether or not you add in the three hundred cars that are coming to the site already is immaterial. They're coming to the site, they're baked into the study, they're analyzed at the driveways, the final analysis reflects that traffic that is entering and exiting the site.
So now you're saying that your sixty-nine does not just include, your sixty-five cars now during rush hour with traffic don't only, are not just the apartment complex of all these people, only sixty-five are gonna be leaving, but it now also includes people that are going retail shopping in the morning also?
No, no.
Okay, so that's what I mean, like shouldn't, if, if you're comparing one scenario to the another, shouldn't that be a realistic scenario of exactly what that's gonna be? It's going to be a residential apartment complex with retail customers as well?
Correct.
Which would show both of those numbers under that category.
Those numbers are in the study, they're in the analysis.
I'm looking at, you just said sixty-five is not, is not representing both.
Sixty-five is what will be generated by, so, so let's go, for instance, if you, if, the sixty-five trips is what would be generated by the residential, exiting the shopping center today in the morning is, or with, or, or when McDonald's is occupied, go to that. There is sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, about a hundred and seventy vehicles exiting the site in the morning today. So if you take the sixty-five and add it to the hundred and seventy...
I'm sorry, where's that number in your, I'm looking at the trip generation comparison.
It's on figure five. Figure five is, is the projected traffic that, that exit the site today. So there is traffic that's already accounted for and is reflected on the figures in the appendix to the report. So there's over a hundred and seventy vehicles leaving this site, or would be leaving this site when McDonald's is operating in the morning.
Okay, and then Stop &amp; Shop, and all the other places?
It's Stop &amp; Shop, it's all that, it reflects Stop &amp; Shop, everything, everything that's on that site, plus the McDonald's, what they're leaving in the morning. And then the sixty-five adds to that. Alternatively, instead of the sixty-five, it would be the, it would be the projection of, of seventy associated with a retail use on the site.
And the sixty-five also includes consideration of larger vehicles that might cause more traffic, for instance, if they're going to be, if they're going to...
It includes all...
I'm sorry, could I finish my question?
It includes, go ahead.
If there're going to be students living there, children of all ages, they're gonna all go to different schools, so they're gonna need all different buses, you know, that type of thing, you know, the different locations, some kids might go to private school, some high school students might drive to high school. So that's taken under consideration, that sixty-five number, all the buses and everything?
It's inclusive of all vehicles associated, customer and associated to a residential development, yes.
Okay. And my other question is, this area, you have earmarked for events there, so you're saying that these events will be open to the public. Was traffic from that considered in this report also? Because I'm sure that if there's an event area, there's gonna, and they're gonna be throwing different things there, there's gonna be, you know, an amount of traffic from that as well?
You know, it's, it's, as discussed by the architect, it's program space, it typically supports people that are already here or coming here. It's, it's not a generator, it's not a daily generator. This is a small space, so I don't expect it to be anything that would cause it, any kind of unique traffic. But it's certainly not generating traffic every day, and maybe, you know, hopefully if there is some sort of event, it's something that could attract life to the center.
Okay. I guess, I guess it's difficult, because in the beginning, we started off, and we were told that this is a retail desert, and now we're showing nine thousand trips to Kmart a day, and, and sixty-nine coming out of a, a four hundred minimum adult apartment unit with buses and everything. I just, you know, it just, it's a total contradiction that a retail desert would be, it just seems like the numbers on the side of, are skewed on both sides. That's, that's what it appears.
So, just to understand the compa-, the purpose of the comparative analysis, regardless of the fact that we are struggling as a retail center and trying to get it reoccupied, which would be the ultimate desire of my client, the property is zoned, it is zoned ZB, GB. So from a traffic standpoint, for consideration of the zoning board that has to weigh the positives and negatives, they've gotta consider what the existing zoning permits in terms of intensities and uses, and traffic generations, which is permitted as of right to be generated. For instance, all of that traffic is permitted to be generated and impact the roads as of right. And the comparative analysis we're providing is that the alternative that we're coming to this board and requesting approval of doesn't intensify and doesn't fall outside the parameters of what the GB zone already allows, and in fact, based on my testimony and projections and review by the board's professionals, is providing for a less intense, at least from a traffic standpoint, generation from this site. And that's, that's the comparative analysis. You can get into all sorts of hypotheticals as to, you know, well, you're not successful, Kmart's been closed from 2018. It doesn't, it doesn't obviate the comparison as to what the GB zone allows in perpetuity, or until the town changes the zoning, versus what we're suggesting as an alternative use on this site, which we believe has benefits to it, both from a reduction in traffic generation, as well as maintaining the activity on the rest of the center. So the, the intent of this whole application at the end of the day is keep a vibrant center and property on, in the township.
I think a lot of your estimates are based on hypotheticals. I think simply the fact that you took two June dates to do an... I think simply the fact that you took two June dates to do an assessment when Rutgers is out, out of session is not anything that's actually based on grounded numbers. And we are trying to keep a vibrant community. So I think that's why we're asking the questions that we're asking.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I could just say one thing, we keep referring to that 64 trips a lot in, for one hour. Just contextually, that's on average one car a minute. That's, that's a lot of cars.
Correct. You know, and if you look at the jet, the generation of a retail, it's a lot more cars.
Oh, no, I understand. It's just the audience questioning that it's a lot.
It is a lot of cars, yes. It's, it's an active, it's an active site. There's no doubt we're regenerating traffic on this site.
Yeah, so, so I have a question, looking at your table one. Weekday morning peak hour enter 20.
20.
When McDonald's opens up, you may have 20 cars every 10 minutes going in for, for a quick breakfast order. I mean, that, that doesn't seem a lot.
McDonald's, that's just the, that's just, that's just the residential. McDonald's will probably generate about 96 entering vehicles.
But, but, I mean, the, the whole, the whole center is commercial and residential.
Correct.
And McDonald's would be much more of that entering.
Correct, and that's, and that is reflected in the traffic study.
Hey, we still have a question.
Yes, I had some questions, Bob, regarding pedestrian traffic. Okay, since we're on the topic of traffic. I'm trying to probe here with my questioning, what is the impact of the addition of pedestrian traffic from 200 apartments? And I heard the phrase, children of all ages being involved. So my question is, first of all, internally, within Rutgers Plaza complex, what safety precautions will be put into place to deter kids from running around the lot, okay, from crossing the entryway from JFK Boulevard and Eastern Avenue? There are no speed bumps. There are no sectioning. How will we deal with the new influx of pedestrian traffic within Rutgers Plaza? Is, was that part of the traffic study in addition to vehicle traffic?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm just going to make the observation that, as with any residential development, whether it's here at Rutgers Plaza or somewhere else in the municipality, there's very little either developer or the board can do to prevent children from playing in the street or in an apartment complex, playing in the parking lot. This witness's testimony is about vehicular traffic, about the changes in vehicular traffic. We've already had testimony from Mr. Turner about the pedestrian site improvements, site modifications. And so on two bases, I'm not sure this is an appropriate question.
Well, you want to reiterate what you said about the sidewalks and network?
Yeah, as, as I testified before, you know, Mr. Turner did discuss this at length, and the internal circulation has been substantially enhanced with all appropriate sidewalk connectivity and so forth, and that provides the safe environment. The monitoring of children, I mean, depending on the age, that's a parental responsibility. That, that exists to, to the set, to the east of us, right in the residential community. It exists across the street. Quite frankly, in 28 years of doing this, I've never seen us develop a project where we have people running all over the place. And parking lots, yes, people walk in parking lots. And, and residential communities, multifamily buildings are surrounded by parking lots throughout the country.
But this is a site that was once retail, which is now proposed to be residential, and that is the difference in the, hence my questioning, what is going to be done by way of safety precautions to account for the fickle human nature of running before traffic? There's nothing to deter children of all ages from traversing this lot any way they please.
Parents.
Do you have a question? I mean, do you have a question?
I, I get what you're saying. I understand it, but we can only go so far in terms of how we're, I mean, there's a parental responsibility involved from the people who may live there. And I don't know if we've ever even gotten to the point here where we have any real specific testimony on what numbers of children are even projected to be there. You know, I've heard someone say 500. I've had people say all these dozens of children running around. Maybe we need some, some testimony on the numbers of, of kids. But as a town, I don't know how we can do any more to protect. I don't know what else we can do than what we already do. We have sidewalks, we have crosswalks, we have stoplights, we have traffic enforcement. And again, we're supposed to have parents.
We're supposed to, exactly, Bob. That's right, but that doesn't always happen.
But we can't legislate that.
Mr. Chairman, I think the issue here is, this was actually testified to at some length when Mr. Turner, the site engineer, testified. He went through the site plan. He went through all the internal sidewalk connections. He went through the crosswalks internal to the site. There are sidewalks along the site's JFK frontage, along the sidewalks, Eastern Avenue frontage. There are crosswalks across those entrances. There's now a sidewalk as part of the McDonald's application leading up from Eastern Avenue into the site. And each of those internal intersections on this plan have, you know, there's sidewalks and crosswalks across each of those driveways. And Mr. Turner testified to that. And I believe there was also, based on a question, I forget if it came from a member of the public or a member of the board, there was also a question about whether there was going to be a sidewalk extending to the bank. And I believe they testified to making some changes to the site plan, I think, to address that.
Okay, then Mark, let me pivot to.
I'm just saying the issue has been addressed and, and I think two meetings ago, we talked about it at good length.
Yeah, I don't think we can, I don't know what else we can do to address it.
Okay, you may want to, a question, will the demographics of the proposed complex be included in some kind of a study or be made available? So we understand what we're dealing with.
We're, we're going to get the same studies that we get when we get traffic reports, projections based on different databases. We don't know who's going to be in there really until they're there.
Okay.
Chair, could we request a community impact statement that would, to some extent, explain the demographic?
Well, we, we have other witnesses coming, but I think it would be just sheer speculation for us to prepare a report saying, this is the demographic of who's going to live there.
Just like with traffic.
We don't know. Well, that's not true. That's very different. Respectfully, it's very different. I mean, there's an established system of data that's gathered from around the country based on real world examples. Who is going to walk in the front door to a leasing center and to give you a report on that demographic?
You don't believe your professional planner could put together a community impact statement that identified how many school age children?
Well, we have somebody who's going to provide testimony, but I mean, that's different than, I mean, I wanted to be clear, what do we mean by demographics? If the question is, is how many kids will be here? There'll be testimony that you'll probably not agree with, but we'll provide it anyway.
I'm expecting five.
Maybe that's the time to ask your question again.
Okay, that's fair enough. I, I'd like to pivot beyond Rutgers Plaza and the potential for pedestrian traffic, and I will include jaywalkers among them, to try to traverse Eastern Avenue without the benefit of clicking on the traffic wait button or using the crosswalks. Now, north of the proposed complex is The Grove and eastern north apartment complexes. Running perpendicular to them both are heightened guardrails that in effect prevent, or I shouldn't say totally prevent, but they deter jaywalkers from going over the most deadliest highway in Somerset County. There are no such heightened guardrails running perpendicular to Rutgers Plaza. So I guess my question would be, would that be considered a safety precaution that could take place?
It could be, but we don't have an authority to do anything. You need to go to Somerset County, and we may make a recommendation, whatever, but that's Somerset County. Then right now, they've got their fabulous million dollar study that's going to take 10 years to tell us what can be built 10 years after that. So I'm being a little facetious, but that is a county issue.
Exactly, Bob.
And one of the biggest fixes for Eastern Avenue that's been proposed over the last 20 years is to put those dividers all the way from New Brunswick to Cedar Grove Lane. And every time you talk about that, people come out and scream bloody murder.
Exactly my point. It's out of our hands. We can't do anything about it, and it's still an added safety risk when it comes to pedestrian traffic.
It is, but I agree with you, but that's going to have to be a risk that's, that's, that's considered by the, the people that, if this is approved, considered by the people that move in there. It's not something we can legislate.
Well, I, I would hope the zoning board would also consider this major safety risk as well, not just the people who are moving in.
It is, we do consider it, but as we both just mentioned, our hands are pretty much tied with Eastern Avenue.
Yep, just so everybody's aware.
Everybody's too aware, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those were my questions.
Anybody else wish to ask a question? I think at this point, this will be the, the last one for this evening. Any other ones will carry over.
Okay, so Catherine Sportek, Sixth Larson Road, Somerset.
And your name.
Catherine Sportek, I said that first. Okay, so I want to ask, are we going to redo the traffic study?
No.
But you mentioned it was done in June, and it does not consider Rutgers University traffic. Are, so clearly you're not aware of how large Rutgers is. How large is Rutgers? How many students in New Brunswick only? I'm not asking the whole state, just New Brunswick.
The, the traffic study is representative of traffic flows. Yes, there is some changes, but it doesn't change the relative impact of this project and those findings. Doesn't, doesn't change the comparative analysis. It doesn't change the fact that moving to a residential development is less impactful on the roads. All of that dispositive information is irregardless of what's happening in the surrounding areas.
There are 50,000 students in New Brunswick, over 17,000 commute Rutgers.com.
If asked questions, don't argue.
Are you aware that 17,000 students, over 17,000 students commute just to New Brunswick alone? So that is a huge impact on traffic. Are you aware of that?
Maybe we could move on from Rutgers. We're, we're all, excuse me, we're all aware of Rutgers. All 17,000 students don't use Eastern Avenue.
Correct.
They go all over the place in different directions.
Correct.
We know there's a problem. We know that Eastern Avenue is rated as the most dangerous street in Somerset County.
I'm glad.
We know there are numerous studies being done to see what can be done. It's, let's see if we can move beyond that. It's been brought up before.
Okay, so can I appeal to you to ask for a second traffic study since it's not representative of the traffic? Because I can tell you, it doubles my commute.
Representation has been made before. Other people have said that, you're right.
It doubles my commute, which is significant. I'm sorry, it's significant. And as someone who lives here, that's massive. It's not someone who casually drives by in off hours. Okay, so, let's see, other questions? Because I have a ton. You are not aware of the $1 million study, we know that already. Were you aware of what Franklin Town, were you keeping up to date on Franklin Township's announcements on Eastern Avenue? Since you have a project, you know you have a vested interest.
I'm not sure that was part of his charge in developing a traffic study for this project.
Okay, well, the Franklin Township.
So I'm not sure that's an appropriate question for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Announcement from July 26th?
What are we talking about?
So this came out from the Franklin reporter and advocate, and I will read it to you verbatim. Friday, July 26, 2024, the Franklin Township police began coordinating traffic enforcement details. They are focusing on high crash areas within Franklin Township, and they are beginning today on Eastern Avenue, so the number one road for high traffic area.
But we already know that.
It's old news.
Well, I know you know that, but unfortunately, our traffic expert seems not to agree.
We have all recognized that Eastern Avenue is a particular problem.
Okay.
And one we have at the moment, very little control over.
Okay, so you said you were there counting cars, correct?
We collect, we collect data, yes.
Okay, so while you were there, did you observe cars trying to make left-hand turns out of Rutgers Plaza? As they're trying to make their left-hand turns out, which is a legal turn, by the way, someone coming at them illegally, going through the no enter to also go through into Rutgers Plaza? So it actually has do not enter signs, but yet cars run through that direction and go through illegally through the one-way. Did you see that?
I didn't personally observe that, no. And I don't think that's a.
I see that pretty much once a week. Okay, so now that you know that, what will you do to try to improve traffic since people drive the wrong way through that entrance?
As we indicated, we're going to pull some crash analysis and see if that's a problem.
Okay. What, so your numbers from the people that won't be leaving the apartment complex, I'm assuming they're working from home? So what number or percentage did you use for your work from home stat?
That's not correct. As I indicated, there's a, there's an ebb and flow of traffic. Traffic occurs over time. Our, our traffic projections are based upon the typical conditions of a residential community flowing. In fact, it's based upon pre-COVID, so we're probably a little bit high because COVID has reduced traffic generation, particularly, particularly on Mondays and Fridays, as we're all aware.
But not all week.
Not all week. Monday, Tuesday, the new peaks are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Did your review look into road rage?
No, I've, I've never looked in road rage in 28 years of my career.
Really? So you're not aware of the road rage on Eastern Avenue? Where guns were fired at another car?
It's not an engineering issue.
No, it does happen. Okay, good to know. Let's see. Okay, so you talked about having enough parking spaces. So what happens if there aren't enough parking spaces?
There won't be enough parking spaces.
You have enough parking spaces. So there you are, you probably don't know this because, again, you drive past, but there's a street called Bayberry Drive.
Maybe you could use the mic a little more.
Bayberry Drive, it's in Somerset, it's off of New Brunswick Road, which a lot of people live off of. And when they built Bayberry Drive, they built with an approved set of parking spots, but unfortunately, it's not enough. So they line New Brunswick Road with their parking, kind of creates a little chaos. So my question is, are you going to be lining Eastern Avenue or JFK?
No, we will have sufficient parking. I can't speak to what another developer may have gotten a variance for or what ordinances affected that, but the parking standards we are using are statewide. They are conservative, they're known to be conservative, and they are appropriate for the site. In fact, we're enhanced at this site because when we peak at night, we have the benefit, if there was ever an overflow of all of the, the thousand spaces that exist on this site, there's no restriction of somebody going into the commercial parking lot. So this site, well, it's one of the benefits of a mixed-use development, has the ability to share the entire parking lot.
Mr. Chairman, I would just appreciate if we can keep the questions to facts that are in the record. We can talk about other developments and what happened at other developments and why something happened that, those are not facts that are in front of this board. There's no witness here who's testified to those facts, and so it's all speculation. And I would ask that we just keep it to the facts of this application.
That's correct. Please do that.
Okay, well, then I would appealing to the board, can you please ask for a new traffic study during Rutgers while it's in session? That we have an accurate, true count?
Consider that.
And not be left with devastating gridlock? Because as this traffic expert mentioned, he doesn't recommend putting a traffic light.
Just a second. You're, you're throwing these things out like they're factually going to happen. Who said there's going to be devastating gridlock?
Okay, so I will tell you why. Because if you don't put a traffic light coming out of the, the parking lot onto JFK, what's going to happen is you're going to have more accidents. People now come into close calls there, and it's, they're not allowed traffic.
Have you been listening? That's under consideration and being studied.
Okay, yes, but here's, here's, here's my caveat.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to interject here. If, if we have a witness who wants to be sworn as an ex. Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to interject here, is if, if we have a witness who wants to be sworn as an expert, we could take all that information in. But we're now getting into just rank speculation about what's going to happen, what might happen.
You can't just throw these things out of, pull these things out of thin air. No, but.
All right, well, my last comment, please reconsider a second traffic study during Rutgers in session, being that it's 17,000 students, and I can tell you my commute doubles. It doubles. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, then we'll close to the public. I think that will be, we did, I did, but it's a momentary lapse in the memory you get when you're my age, she is last, all right? And because we're not, we were going to move to another witness, but I don't know if that's, I don't know if you have one. And I don't know if that's wise before 10 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, my experience has been we get through about one witness a meeting, so we brought one witness.
And let's look for a date, and do you know, are you able to project who the witness, first one will be?
Well, I can tell you that Mr. Penkey will be back because I assume there'll be additional questions, so he'll be the first.
Right, okay.
And then we will have Chris Otto.
That would be?
Chris Otto from the Otto Evaluation Group, who's going to provide testimony about the use, the economics, about the demographics, a whole host of issues related to what some of the board members had asked for. You may recall, he's testified in front of the board before on other applications.
I wondered why you'd use that name and we had no idea who it was, but he's testified here before.
Yes.
Members of the public, you may wish to stay for a few more minutes because we'll announce the next meeting.
He's going to be here for more public questions. And then the, the subject of the next witness was already announced, if everybody was.
And we may, and we may also try, depending on how the night goes, to have Mr. Minow provide his response, our response, to the recommendations from the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay, that would be good, too.
I'm sorry?
Is he a planner?
Oh.
Next witness.
Mr. Minow is an architect.
No, no, I understand that.
No, our planner is not for the next meeting, our planner is probably for the meeting after that.
Okay.
And the planner is Paul Phillips, but he will not be at the next meeting.
In my notes, I have Otto Evaluation, who's Otto?
Otto Evaluation will talk about the report on the potential occupancy of the building, the economics, talk about the market for the retail that has not materialized leading the applicant to making this application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so.
The next meeting is?
I'm sorry?
The next meeting is?
Yeah, John and I already discussed that earlier today, so we're going to be moving, carrying this application to September 19th. I'm going to ask you now, because it wasn't something we discussed, did you want that one also to start at 6:30 or is 7:30 agreeable to you?
How the rest of you feel about it?
I missed my 5 o'clock drink, but, you know, it'll be all right.
Any objections to 6:30? A 6:30?
Is that okay with you?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, all right, so then we'll be carrying Levin Properties, EBA 240001, to 6:30 at September, on September 19th, here at 475 Demont Lane. It'll be reflected on the website as the summary of action is updated there. John, there is a matter that, we talked about it, might be penciled in.
The, the extension, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you didn't send me an extension, but.
I did.
Yeah.
But I'm going to send you another one now because we need more time.
Yeah, so we do have another applicant, I did get a chance to discuss it with Mark, it does seem to be a small applicant, so just like we had somebody come in before you today, we may have, but as I stated to you, it was penciled in, so I don't know whether it's a real thing, you know, really definitely coming, but I can let you know when we get closer.
That's fine, I mean, the more time we have, the more we can get through, but I understand you've got other applications as well.
Okay, and then board members, again, it'll be at 6:30 and I'll send out my reminders as well because this is a hot topic, if you will, I'll make sure I ask.
We need a motion for that?
I'm sorry?
We need a motion for that?
We need a motion to carry it to the next public meeting and then.
At 6:30?
Yeah. So Joe, do you want to have a seat? Because the meeting's not over, we need a motion, so.
Make a motion, carry, carrying this application to the next meeting.
I move that we carry this application to the next meeting, subject to having received an extension of time from the applicant. At 6:30? At 6:30. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So just to clarify, I did send you a letter extending it to September 30.
You did.
So we'll extend it. Yeah, so you're already extended.
Good.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.